Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. It is Tuesday, April 30th, and we are reconvening Finance and Council as a whole. This time is 6:04. And at this time, I will ask the clerk to call the roll call.
Councilwoman Malle Garthwaite is absent. Councilman Brian Lox?
Councilman Brian Lox, present.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan? Councilwoman Michelle Coletti?
Michelle Coletti, second district, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbaraly is absent. Councilman Gary Donovan?
Councilman Gary Donovan, fourth district, present.
Councilman Edward McMillan?
Councilman Edward McMillan, fifth district, present.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan is absent. Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker, seventh district, present.
Councilman Christopher Vargo?
Councilman Christopher Vargo, eighth district, present.
Councilwoman Katie Muller?
Councilwoman Katie Muller, ninth district, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, tenth district, present.
And Chairman Nicholas Pascal.
Chairman Nicholas Pascal, present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First up this evening is the Purchasing and Procurement Department, and Rick Spire is here to speak on their behalf.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome. Um, so...
I'm sorry, we're on page fifty-two, fifty-three.
Fifty-two, fifty-three, yep. Uh, department is fully staffed. The procurement director, uh, working with the union now to rename, re-classify the title to, uh, senior buyer, senior analyst. Uh, we ran, uh, interviews for two, two and a half months and just really couldn't find someone, uh, with the qualifications to be a director level of the department. Um, I'm, I was the director of the department, so I'm just going to kind of give guidance where needed, and our new finance director will oversee the department. So, uh, we felt that, uh, the senior buyer we brought in was a good fit and works well with, uh, with our current buyer, and we have a procurement admin that was not filled last year that is currently in that role now. Um, the operating budget is, is pretty self-explanatory. Uh, all the office supplies in the, in the city and for the police department run through the purchasing department. Um, the other office equipment line is, um, exactly what it says. It's just another office equipment. I think this, uh, I'm not sure, one eighty-two, I, I'm not really sure where they came that number from, but it's, it's something that obviously wasn't been, hasn't been used much in the past, so, um, the advertising budget is for all of our, uh, bids, our legal notices for our bids. Uh, overtime, we put a thousand dollars in there for overtime because, um, there's just the, the off chance that there's overtime. We don't have much overtime in the procurement department, so a thousand dollars would be completely sufficient for overtime. And, uh, our printing budget, we, uh, the only thing we print now are our, um, our bid receipts that we give to, uh, prospective bidders when they come in. They're time stamped and they're, uh, made in triplicate, so we do have those printed, but that's the only thing we print outside of the house. And that's pretty much it for the budget.
Rick, my only question is, um, understanding that you're converting the, uh, procurement director to senior buyer, is the number that's in the budget, is that a comfortable number for that position?
That is, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I had. Any questions to the council? Councilman Donovan?
Yep, just want to clarify something on, on record, just to make sure. The, um, the procurement administrator, reason why it's up that much is because the last council only did half.
Budgeted for half a year.
For half, right?
Yes.
That's with the full year because that's, that would be.
Correct. Twenty-four, three is half of the forty-eight, six that it was in for, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilman Lox?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, what are you spending annually on goods and services?
Define goods and services.
Well, you must buy, for instance, you know, services would be, um...
We have a lot of service, outside legal services, professional services.
Exactly. All that stuff.
That's...
Indirect spend.
That, see, the indirect spends go directly through the departments, so we don't, the, we procure it for the departments. Each department has, legal has outside legal services, finance has other professional services.
Okay.
Um, Public Works has, you know, uh, professional services for like trees and things like that, so we procure, the procurement department procures that for them, but they have their own budgets set for it.
Okay. So, say you need, I don't know, staffing services.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you're gonna go out for a bid. Who, who manages that?
Who manages the bid?
Yeah, who, who, you know, how, how does that bid process work?
So the bid, well, uh, the procurement department would work with the department head who's requesting the outside services.
Yep.
Uh, we would develop a scope of work, what the, what the scope, uh, of services should be from the outside agency. Uh, and then we would publish a legal notice, and then we would, uh, publish it on our website, but also send it directly to staffing services we worked with before, Merritt, Robert Half. Uh, depending on what the service was, there's specialized staffing services for specialized, uh, uh, services as well, so.
Okay. So, just to answer my question directly, do you have any feel for what you spend in terms of goods and services on an annual basis? Say you gotta go buy a tractor tomorrow.
Sure, that would be in our capital plan, so a good, so it, it's a hard que, I mean, I, I can find out, and it's a hard question to answer. I can, I can get it for you. Um, just because it's budgeted, it's not a central services, so you'll see, um, there is a central services department in here, and I don't think there's actually much in there anymore. I think they actually, I think they actually took it out because we moved everything into purchasing, but, um, nothing is centrally purchased, uh, on a, on a overall base like that besides our office supplies. And the office supplies is only because, um, we didn't specialize that within each department because we don't know how much each department's gonna need an office supply, so it's, it's a, it's a relatively small spend compared to legal services, professional services, but, I mean, I can, I can find that number out for you if you'd like me to.
How would you?
Excuse me, just as a point of information, page fifty-seven is the central services.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thanks.
Okay. There's no cover page for it, that's fine, I'm sorry.
How many, how many purchase orders and contracts do you think are executed on an annual basis?
Um, right now, we're up to purchase order, about twenty-six hundred purchase orders in right now. Um...
Who generates those?
The purchase.
Tactically, tactically, who does that work?
The, there's a requisitioner in each department.
Yep.
The requisitioner puts a requisition in through Munis.
Yep.
Their department head has to approve the requisition.
Yep.
After that process, it goes to the procurement department.
Yep.
Procurement department, um, makes sure that, you know, that, that the number's over ten thousand. We make sure that it was a publicly bid. If it's over twenty-five hundred, we make sure that it was, uh, quoted correctly.
Yep.
Uh, procurement department then approves the requisition, uh, and if it's over a certain threshold, over ten thousand, the finance director also approves it.
Okay.
After that, it, it's generated into a PO and sent back to the original requ- uh, requisitioner.
So, so that, that requisition that gets generated by your ERP system, it goes through a hierarchy for approval?
Correct.
And then it ends up in your buyer's queue, and, uh, my assumption is that is purely a rubber stamp and tactical at that point in time?
I'm sorry?
That's a rubber stamp. In other words, you have somebody going back to like legal services.
Mm-hmm.
That gets generated in legal services. It goes through an approval hierarchy based on the dollar spend.
Mm-hmm.
It ends up in the buyer's desk. It's all been approved.
Mm-hmm.
They're cutting a PO off that requisition and sending it to the supplier.
So the, what comes back to him is actually a purchase order. It's not, the, the, it doesn't, a requisition doesn't come back to him.
Okay.
After through the whole process, it's converted into a, the requisition's converted to a purchase order.
Okay.
So what the, what the original requisitioner receives is a certified purchase order, a legal obligation for us to pay. Um, and then, yes, they send it to, to their vendor or consultant, whoever.
So twenty-six hundred POs so far year-to-date, so should I assume that, I don't know, what is that, ten thousand a year?
Uh, twenty-six hundred, that's fiscal year-to-date, so.
Okay.
Uh, four thousand, four, forty-two hundred is a good.
So forty-two hundred annually?
Yeah.
How about contracts?
Contracts, it, it varies. Uh, not all of our, our, uh, bids that go out have a contract generated for them. I mean, our, our purchase orders are legal contracts. There, there are terms and conditions on the back of all of our purchase orders, so, um, the, uh, amount of contracts, let's say last year, we had go through the bidding process approximately fifty bids go through the bid process, but not each one of them has a contract generated from it.
Um, how, uh, so you don't really know, I, I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, like, if you have a master supply agreement or professional services?
Do we have? Do we have one?
How many of those, you know, do your buyers work with internal stakeholders to like get those agreed to and executed and that whole thing?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're, what you're, what you're asking. Can't you just say it again? I'm sorry.
So, so if you're buying professional services?
Correct.
Going back to legal services, going back to, you know, hire a consultant or somebody in Robert Half to help out the procurement department. Um, if you're doing, say, a one-year agreement or a contract for a period of time, um, how many of those do you generate per year?
Well, the Robert Half ones were a little different. Last year, the last year or so, we did a lot. We probably went through maybe eight consultants with Robert Half.
Yep.
Um, legal services is something we don't have to, you don't have to bid, and our charter doesn't require us to bid legal services, so, uh, those are contracts that are either set up through legal or just, uh, procured on an as-needed basis with legal services. Um, other than that, we don't have many, um, non-contractual, uh, services, so our, um, on-call architecture services are all through contracts, our, uh, on-call engineering services are all through contracts. Um, that's, that's, that's about, I mean, our...
Yes. So, so like when engineer, in terms of engineering services,
Mm-hmm.
um, is that on a professional services agreement? Is that on a master supply agreement? Is that on a PO? And how does, how does, so how do those services get executed at the end of the day? Like, who does that? Who puts those, who's the team of people that puts that contract together?
Our legal team puts the contract together, and, and, and when we bid out the architectural services, it was through the ARPA committee, so the ARPA committee's attorneys had say into that as well. So, we actually bid that out again. We will bid that out again this fall, so, um, our legal team will put together the, the contractual, you know, language and that, though.
I, I guess from a business standpoint, do you think that's a good or a bad idea? In, in other words, I guess what I'm trying to get at, does procurement play any role in that type of negotiation in terms of rates? In terms of, you know, payment terms, in terms of any of that?
Sure. Yeah, sure. We negotiate payment terms and we negotiate rate. I mean, it's, our, 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 we don't, once we receive a bid, we are allowed to negotiate the terms of the bid after, we, all of our bid language has that, you know, we are, we are allowed to negotiate rates. We are now to negotiate whatever within the best interest of the city, so, um, it's not just a cookie cutter, take what we get and run with it. It's, um, but there are some, yeah, there are some that we just, okay, the lowest bid, we understand that there's a, this is a purely cost-driven bid, not a proposal, so, you know, we just go with the lowest price on those.
How does, can you, I, I just want to understand, how does, how does Ken Carney's group, um, in terms of the ARPA projects with the three or four people that work for him, how do they engage with you guys when it comes to the procurement of anything?
They'll... They will work with us to develop a scope of work of what they're looking for.
Yep.
Um, we put the project out to bid.
Yep.
Uh, we ask for the ARPA committee's input when, when, um, scoring the bids, and then we give them their input when we award it, too. It's not purely, you know, let the ARPA committee pick who they want from the bids. It's, um, everything scored. I mean, it has to, ARPA especially, everything has to be scored and, and, and done correctly, or else it doesn't pass the ARPA
Right.
test with UHY, so.
Just to build on the, the scoring, um, I mean, you guys, how, how do you guys, do you have a, do you have a matrix, a criteria that you develop? Is there a scoring matrix?
It's, if, it, it really depends on the bid, and we'll put, if there's, if it's a very complicated bid, we'll put on the bid how it's, you know, what the criteria for, for selection will be, you know, if it's, uh, eighty percent design, you know, or forty percent design, thirty percent price, twenty percent rev, uh, you know, experience, that, and then when, once we do it, we weight all the scores based on what, each criteria.
Yeah. I, you know, I get, I guess, I guess my concern is, this, this is my concern, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So, we just gave, we just voted and gave, I don't know, one point three million dollars for Ken to continue the execution of the ARPA work, and I'm assuming that, you know, pays for his staffing and the copies he has to make for the meeting and that sort of thing.
Well, Ken, Ken Carney doesn't get paid to do ARPA. Ken's, he's a, he's a volunteer. He doesn't, all the, the, the copies that you see
Yep.
that he gives you, that's, none of that comes out of ARPA at all, none of that money. His committee is not paid, his minutes that he produces are not, you know, charged to anything. He does that all himself, so I, I think it's, I don't think it's a fair characterization to say that we gave Ken Carney one point three million dollars to run ARPA. We, Ken Carney is, his committee is overseeing the spend, the one point three million dollar spend, but he's not taking any money for it.
No, 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 just poor choice of words on my part.
I'm sorry, okay, just wanted to make sure.
What I'm trying to get at is, we allocated one point three million, and it was my understanding it was to help with the administrative burden and the infrastructure that goes along with
So...
perhaps the, the procurement and the RFP process and all that stuff that goes into that.
So, we gave the one point three million dollars, the, the overseeing is for our accounting to make su, our accountants make sure that everything is a, an allowable expense with ARPA before we bid anything, so
Yep.
it has to go through our, it has to go through our, the ARPA legal, you know, attorneys.
Yep.
Um, and then we have one Robert Half, our accountant, that we pay here
Okay.
at City Hall.
Yep.
But that's, that, I mean, that's, there's no, we're not paying someone to write bids for us or anything like that, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my concern is, like, when Ken's infrastructure goes away, here, here's what I'm getting at. You're unsure about the twenty-six hundred POs. You don't really know how many contracts.
I'm sorry, is this, this is, we're, we're talking about budgetary stuff. I just, I just, I just, I, I, I think we're getting
We're, we're getting a little far afield from
Yeah, yeah.
from the budget, so if we could rank back into
I'd be happy to have these conversations. It just seems like you, you've gone out of your way twice now to try and embarrass me and my department, and it's just...
Don't, don't, don't take it personally, because it is about budgeting. And what I'm trying to get at for you is,
Mm-hmm.
at the end of the day, are you convinced that you're properly staffed, or do you need more money to run your procurement department? So it's not personal.
Okay.
It's business. That's what I'm trying to get at. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm not trying to drag you down. I'm just trying to get at the facts.
Okay. So I, I, I can easily look up how many purchase orders. You, when you characterize me as you're not sure how many purchase orders you've done, you're not this. I get it. I, I think our procurement department runs very well. I think it's a brand-new department in the, in the city.
Yep.
I think it's overseen by myself, by our new finance director, by our current assistant finance director. I think the people that are staffing it are, are doing a bang-up job, and I think that if we get to the point where we're, you know, generating, you know, a, a whole bunch more POs and stuff, and we need to staff it more, then we will absolutely look into staffing it more, and I appreciate your, your concern with that, and I apologize if, if you think I was, uh, out of line, but I just...
See, see, for me, for me, because I've spent my entire career in, in the field, I know that when you decentralize procurement and you send it to your friend Abdul in engineering,
Mm-hmm.
who at the end of the day has no time to do a thing,
Mm-hmm.
right? That's where you need a savvy procurement group to kind of manage that, because my gut feeling is, at the end of the day, your departments are so resource-constrained
Mm-hmm.
that they don't have really the opportunity to get the best price that you can get for the taxpayers, and that's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
So this is not a, you know, just, just forget it. This is not a personal thing. I'm just trying to get at, are you properly staffed?
Okay.
That, that's all.
Okay.
That's all.
Sure.
All set?
Yeah.
For now.
You're all set. Uh, Councilwoman Heffernan? He says all set. Your mic, please.
Thank you, thank you. I do have a question about in, on page fifty-seven, the copier rental.
Mm-hmm.
The actual expenses in twenty-three were fifty-nine, and then we budgeted fifty for twenty-four, and the projection is seventy-two, but we're gonna request sixty this coming year?
Yeah, so we, we, we had printers that had, um, reached their end of lifespan. We had to buy out of a few of the, of the, of the printer contracts. Um, I'm not sure why it's at seventy-two, five, fifty. That, I don't know. I don't know why the, the, I don't know if it was something was, um...
Do you think we need more money there?
No, we've, we've actually decreased our, our, uh, printer count. I think we're, I think we'll be fine with sixty thousand.
Because then, I mean, because the other office equipment is projected of eight thousand and we budgeted thirty, so I don't know. I'm, I'm not really that budget savvy, but maybe you could add some front to the copier and take some from the office equipment? Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
Can, can, at another date, you could ask for a...
Sure, we could trans, we could do an interdepartmental transfer for that. Sure, absolutely.
That's my question. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spire.
You're welcome.
Rick, uh, I just have a two-part question, um, because your other department starts about five minutes, so just, just the highlights.
Okay.
Um, we all, we're all aware that a couple of years ago, there was, you know, there were some issues with, with bad POs getting approved and whatnot. We know what the issues are.
Correct.
Could you give us a high-level overview of what's been done to shore that up and confirm for me that, that what you need in order to make sure that those loopholes are closed is fully funded in this budget?
Sure. So everything, the, the, the process, as I, as I walk through, Councilman Lox, with, um, is the fail-safe in this? We're, the only people in the city that are allowed to create a vendor right now are the three people you see on this purchasing page. Uh...
That's gonna be the buyer analyst, the procurement administrator, and the soon-to-be?
Senior buyer analyst. The only people that are allowed to create
Not, not even finance?
Finance director's not allowed, no one in there, in the city is allowed to create a vendor except for these three people. Um, the only people allowed to turn a purchase or a requisition into a purchase order are the procurement director, well, the buyer analyst and the senior buyer analyst. So the only people allowed to turn a requisition into a purchase order, so, um, the amount of, of steps taken to go from a requisition to a purchase order, we don't pay anything without a purchase order. There are, um, a couple of, of, of our insurance premiums, things I think get paid on a voucher still, but that's just some sort of an accounting thing. I, you'd have to talk to Dave Taylor about that, but I think it's maybe less than, less than five percent of our, of our bills get paid on, on a, on a payment voucher. Um, so, yeah, it's, 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 I, I, I have a hundred percent faith in the system that it would be, and nothing's impossible. And obviously, and just, you could, you know, one of the, one of the three people here could, you know, conceivably have ill intentions, but it would take a lot to get something past this, and then, once a check is cut, it goes through the finance director and, uh, Treasurer Quagmarni. They do a, a, a quick, um, they'll pull out any, any audits that they want to do on any of the checks, uh, and...
Will they like match a, a PO to a check?
Absolutely. So they'll, they'll, you know, Treasurer Quagmarni, you know, will, he's here every Thursday. He's still hand-signing all the checks. He doesn't want his stamp on his check, so he sands, hand-signs every check, and he pulls twenty to thirty checks a week to make sure that they're matched up to the correct POs, so.
And you're comfortable that everything that the department's put into this budget is sufficient to make sure those loopholes stay
Correct.
as close as we can?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Tucker?
Hi. Sorry. Can you, uh, talk about the vendor list? I know that we talked a bit about that earlier on.
Correct.
Um, has that been updated?
Yes. So, when I got here, our vendor list had over thirty thousand vendors on it. Um, we were using such an old version of our, uh, ERP software that, uh, we could not mass update our vendor list. Um, so when we moved to this new vendor list, uh, Tammy O'Connell, who's the buyer, and myself, uh, worked with Munis to create a, a role that, uh, called stop in the ERP. It's not an inactive accounts. It's called a stop account, so we can still, um, see all the history for these accounts, but none of them get paid, none of them get an order against them. And then we went through and activated our, uh, four hundred or so, um, most-used accounts as were identified by Marb and Whittlesey and a few others. Uh, we're up to now, um, a little less than two thousand active vendors, uh, and, uh, our vendor list is also, um, our vendor database also has a, we're using a temporary status for vendors, because we have a lot of, uh, people in town that get Medicare reimbursements and things that don't come through payroll, comes through AP. Uh, so we'll set them up on a temporary, so every thirty days, that account goes to inactive, so all we have to do when we set them up again is set them up. So we'll set them up on a temporary, so every 30 days that account goes inactive. So all we have to do when we set them up again is set them up. And so, yeah, we've got the vendor, Marb is super happy what we did. We've got the vendor list completely under control.
So I guess the other question that I have, because we talked a bit about this early on in the ARPA process, was about, you know, diversity and, you know, supplier diversity. And, you know, do you have a process where you could ensure that you are, you know, including diverse, you know, businesses, women-owned businesses, all that good stuff?
So when we post our bids on the, on the DAS website, the Connecticut DAS website, you can select that, you know, to highlight the bid for MBEs, WBEs and small business owners as well. The DAS, the DAS department also has a mailing list for MBEs and WBEs. So we make sure that we send communications out to them that there's bids available. We don't send the actual bid. We just put our link to our bid page on there that there's bids available on the City of West Haven website as well.
So it's going to, it's going to people beyond the list of 2,000 that you?
Oh, correct, yeah. No.
It's not just going to.
Oh, no, no, no. We, yeah, we don't, because that vendor database is so diverse, it doesn't, I mean, it's everyone from, you know, Vio's apparel to, you know, Merrill Lynch. So it's, it's so random. We, we send these, when we post a bid, we send it, you know, put in the paper, we send on our site. But we also send it directly to any group that we can find that we think we're going to get a good response from.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All set? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. Rick, you just touched base on it real quick. I know other departments have been talking about it with just the change of times. Software, are we all up to date with software? There's no surprises coming down the road? Like we're going to have to spend $50,000 to update X, Y and Z?
Nope. So we have, we updated Munis. It's done. We're on the, we're on the latest version of Munis now in the capital plan in this budget on page 126 is $166,000 to upgrade our Mitchell Humphrey software program, which is what our building department currently uses and we're going to turn Public Works onto it next. It's just a, it's kind of like a client management software. So all of our departments can now talk to one another, you know, see what, see what the other departments are doing with a certain address or resident or anything like that. So we're, we're slowly moving into the, into the new age, but kicking and screaming, but we're on our way.
Perfect. And number two, I, I know it's a small department, but a very important one, so I have to ask it. Is there anything on the wish list for future whatever?
Um.
Or just something to keep the, keep an eye on down the road? Kind of like, it would be nice if we had this eventually because?
Uh, no, I, I think, you know, eventually what I'll do is, is I will, you know, probably use some of my overtime budget on this that doesn't get used. And I will, I know that our buyer is very interested in becoming a CPPO, a Certified Public Purchasing Official. So I'd be happy to, you know, spend a little bit of that money and help her get that certification as well. So that, that's, that would, you know, but I'm talking, you know, a couple of hundred dollars. It's nothing, nothing major wish lists for, for procurement though. I think we're pretty well covered.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Welcome. Any other questions on purchasing? Councilwoman Cloty?
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Rick. Just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
When you changed the title of procurement director to senior buyer, there's nothing in any sort of regulations that refer to a procurement director that would need to be kind of modified across the board?
No. No.
It doesn't compromise any standards?
No, not at all.
That was one question. And then when you send out to, you went over the, the 2,000 vendors, is there any preference given to an existing vendor over a new vendor?
No. We have, our only vendor preference, we have a local vendor preference in our charter. That's the only vendor preference that we have.
Okay. And then the Mitchell Humphrey software, each, there's an overarching $166,000 baseline service, but each department, it really kind of grows with you?
Sure.
As you engage it?
Yeah.
Is the widget that you would need to enhance your activities with procurement within the 166,000?
I'm not sure that, that the procurement department, that this software package would actually even really touch procurement. This is more.
Overall community?
Yeah, like a, a building permit is, is applied for at, you know, 123 Main Street. And the health department gets something and they want to see, you know, 123 Main Street comes in to, to get something from them and they look up 123 Main Street, they can see that the building department's put these notes on or that they're in the process of applying for, you know, absentee landlord. I don't, it's just, it's, it's something that we can't tell right now. So if, if someone comes to the building department and needs a sign off from the fire marshal, we can't tell right now if it's happened or not. So we send, that's why we have the fire marshal there, but we said, we'd have to send them to, you know, the center district and they, they come back and then they go to health. Here we can just, okay, you need to get, I can see on this right here, you still haven't gotten health, Public Works and Parks and Rec. So make sure you get those three before you come back. So it's really not, nothing that would touch the procurement department at this point. But down the road, I mean, it might be something. But right now, the, the vision for this is more interdepartmental communication.
And then I think it's been asked a couple of different ways, but you're sure that the personnel is covered here to, in accordance with Marb recommendations of how to, you know, best practices?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that was it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on purchasing? Councilman Lox?
Just a couple more. In terms of, I just want to make sure that I have this correct. You talked about software. Are there any other things, technologies that you see in the future that may streamline or make the department more efficient? Like RPA or blockchain or any of that stuff?
I, I don't have a lot of experience with RPA and blockchain. I know what they are. I don't know. Off the top of my head, I mean, these, these are software programs that help, you know, add efficiencies to anything. I mean, that's something, yeah, would I, would I discount that and say I wouldn't want something like that? Absolutely not. I mean, that's something that, you know, next budget season, maybe it is something we look at and say, you know, we can streamline our, our process a little more with, with this. But right now, it's, it's, it wasn't in the, in the cards this time.
Okay. In terms of skills and expertise, you talked about you're one purchasing person that might want to be the CPO, the, that, are there any other things that you think you should budget for in terms of, you know, like negotiation skills or?
Sure, sure. That's, that'll probably be in, in our next budget season. We'll probably put in, you know, a convention and dues line for this, for, for purchasing as well. Because there are, you know, most, the good thing with, with purchasing is a lot of them are online and a lot of them are free from the state. So we, we will, we will make sure that Tammy and Kathy are enrolled in, you know, any DAS webinar that comes up. But yeah, I think that's, you know, down the road, that's something that, you know, an NGIP or something like that, that we should make sure that our, our purchasing people, at least one of, you know, one of them go at a time, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thanks, Rick.
You're welcome.
All right, we are moving on to risk management. Is that also you?
That'll be myself and Chris Tiberio is our risk manager. So I wasn't really sure.
Is there actually a?
There is not.
There's no page.
The risk manager is a position within finance. It doesn't have, it's on page 50. It doesn't.
And this was moved from Corp Counsel's Office?
It was, yes, yes. And finance is a much more logical place for it to land to stand, so. So I can, I can have Chris Tiberio, if you have any, you know, procedural questions.
Fill the name?
T-I-B-E-R-I-O.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, so I mean, any budgetary questions with this? I'd be happy to help, but any questions about, I mean, I'm sure he can help you with insurance and performance comp and things like that, so.
Yeah, a little backdrop on myself. So Chris Tiberio, I'm relatively new to the city. So I came on board full-time in January of this year. So prior to that, I did two-month consulting with the city. They had a risk insurance professional need, so originally started on a consultant basis and then gravitated to a full-time position. Prior to that, I had 35-plus years on the corporate side. So the municipalities are brand-new to me. So I was the global risk manager at IBM and PepsiCo prior to this. So, but like I said, new to the municipality side. So what I put together for you, which you're taking a quick look at, is a review we did with Marb last week, two weeks ago. And what it is, it's a schedule of all of our insurance policies that we maintain at the city level. And I'll describe it as very normal and customary coverage that we, that we carry. So we look at it from a property, from a casualty, from a worker's comp perspective. Those are really our big issues when it comes to liability that the city retains. And so like I said, like I said, the insurance is really geared towards those three disciplines, let's call them. So what I did is I put together a chart that just shows the various coverages we have. And then there's a narrative behind it that shows what our limits are, what our premium that we pay and what our deductibles are. So if, you know, I know we are just looking at it for a first time, but if there's any questions on the insurance, I'd be happy to take a stab at answering it. But like I said, it really is very normal and customary. We do benchmark with other municipalities in terms of what they carry. And we also have consultants that help guide us in terms of, PMA is a big municipality broker consultant. And like I said, we work very closely with them in terms of aligning our coverage and making sure we have adequate limits and adequate coverage. You know, we do look at it from a terms and conditions point of view, just to make sure that it is proper coverage for the city. And like I said, we work individually at that, give opinion. And like I said, we really defer to our consultants with regards to the coverages that we do buy.
Councilwoman Tucker?
Good. Likewise.
Uh, Councilman?
Thank you, sorry. I keep forgetting. The question I guess I have is about, in the past, we've had, you know, workers' comp claims that were probably a little bit more than what we would expect. And I know that there were some things put into place. Can you talk about the benefit? Or is there a benefit, I should ask, of having put systems, processes into place for the staff, you know, so that, does that have an impact on our insurance?
Yeah, I mean, great question. You know, there's a number of things we need to do as a city better. You know, when we look at our insurance, you know, the insurance premium we spend is subject to market conditions, right? We came off a very difficult period over the last decade when it comes to insurance, where rates were really skyrocketing over the last 10-year period. And it was, you know, very difficult to contain costs. That's stabilizing. So for this year and next year, you know, we may see a 5% increase in insurance premiums, but again, that is really subject to market conditions. Where we're really going to make an impact is on the safety side and putting the proper initiatives in place and making sure we control our losses. That's really where we're going to make the most impact. So it's really becoming up upon us to make sure we have the right processes in place. We get the right training for our people. We get the right driver safety implemented. And that's really where we need to go. We really need to, like I said, set up the proper procedures to make sure we make the environment as safe as possible. That's how we're going to make the greatest impact.
So, and I don't, I don't, I don't know what you do for education and training of staff as it relates to safety in the city?
Yep.
And maybe that's a question for Ricky, but is there any vision for us to add some of those kinds of certifications to have your workers become safety certified? So that they can make sure that others are safe?
Yes.
As they do their work?
Right now, what we're looking at is the state does provide a lot of training. OSHA provides enormous training. And so what we're looking to do is to get people in training, qualified as OSHA instructors.
Yeah.
And really implement that through the rank and file. So again, that's going to be one of our initiatives for this year. Is ideally, we'd like to get three or four supervisors trained from an OSHA 10 perspective and like I said, trickle that down to the rank and file. We need that knowledge. We need that training. And that's how we're going to make an impact.
So you said a lot of them are for, like, they're free, I guess, from the state, but is there a cost? Do you know how much it would cost to do that?
Um, coincidentally, today, a bulletin came, they are offering two-day sessions for OSHA 10 facilitators. It's $200 per person. So, you know, there is a cost, but it's, you know, it's fairly minimal when we look at what it can produce and the impact it could have on the city. So like I said, we're looking to get the right people in that training so we can spread that throughout the town.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
All set?
Thank you.
Chris, I just have a couple of questions. My, my experience with insurance is limited to either my home or a little bit of commercial. Is it, I, I see that we don't have several carriers. I mean, it is limited to, I think, four or five, but is that, are, are we, are we getting the best price? Because why, we're diversifying. I know we're relying on Pennsylvania for the lion's share of it, but are we getting the best price because we're spreading out some?
Yeah, the reality is the marketplace for municipalities is relatively small. There's probably four or five carriers that are interested in our type of risk. We do maintain very high deductibles, so a lot of it is issuing paper. And a lot of the carriers really don't want to be just a paper issuer to the, you know, to the, to the state. So it is a fairly small universe of carriers. You know, from a continuity perspective, from an excess liability perspective, a lot of times it is targeting on one or two or three providers on a primary basis, which then attaches to our excess carrier. But in terms of marketing, that is one of the initiatives, is we do want to market the program. We want to make it as competitive as possible. So in the future years, we're going to be looking at that.
Do these carriers offer incentives, generally speaking, offer incentives for purchasing various types of products?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's leverage. We want to maintain a relationship with our carriers because again, that does add leverage. So the more business they have, the more kind of wed we are, they're wed to us and vice versa. And, you know, so, you know, like I said, it's fairly common to have the same primary carriers in place on the liability policies. And if it makes sense on the property, we could look to that as well. But like I said, we do leverage that carrier pretty, pretty.
These, these self-retention numbers, when you look at them individually, they're high, but they're not jaw-dropping. But when you aggregate them all, it's pretty, it's a pretty large number. Is this a number that we set and it, and it offsets what the premiums are, kind of like our deductible?
Yeah, yes. You know, we are looking at higher retentions in terms of retaining more risk, where we're comfortable in trying to predict that. The problem is, is where we end up taking more risk, we don't get proper credit from the carriers. So there's really not that incentive to go to a higher retention because we're just not getting the premium relief. So we are kind of, I won't say stuck, but it makes sense to kind of keep them as is. Because like I said, we're just not getting credit from the carriers on those.
Because the ones that, that are eye-opening for me is something like law enforcement, where it's a million dollars. That, that's a incredibly high number for a very high-risk department.
And, and we do look at coverage from a catastrophic risk perspective. The frequency on those claims is very small, right? I mean, that's a one-in-25-year event, I'd like to think. You know, we saw a big one in New Haven. But like I said, it really is catastrophic coverage. We're looking to buy and procure and, you know, protect the city from. You know, but carriers are going to require a high retention. You know, they're not into claim management. They're not, we don't pay them to settle, to manage claims. We're really paying them for that one-in-10, one-in-25-year event.
That, that exceeds that, that high number?
Yes.
Are, are these numbers comparatively speaking, are these numbers, you said the, the retentions are high numbers. Are these high numbers or these average numbers?
I'd say they're average numbers. You know, we, we also look at the limit. We compare how much limit we buy to other municipalities. And like I said, we're, we're about average in terms of what other, you know, peer municipalities and peer cities. And, and like I said, we look at that pretty closely. There is no right or wrong answer. It's really, you know, how do other municipalities look at this and do we treat that equally?
Right. And I think my final question, page 98 of our, of our budget book, I don't know. And I think my final question, page ninety-eight of our, of our budget book, I don't know if you have it with you, is the city insurance premiums. General liability went up 124%. Is that correct?
I... It's, it's not going up 124%. I don't know the function of these numbers. I can get back to you on that, but I think it's a, it's a matter of how did we classify the premiums last year versus this year? But, you know, I'll circle back with you on that.
Okay. So, because the only, because what I'm focusing on also is the twenty, twenty-two-four budget, which we're in now, $600,000 for premiums, projected is basically almost 1.172, almost. And then now we're budgeting 1.3 and change.
Yeah. Like I said, it's, it's, it's an issue of comparison this year versus last year, and I'll have to talk to David about that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilwoman Heffernan?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for coming.
Sure.
Thank you, Matt, Mr. Chair. I wanted to know, is this a new... It says the expiration date is from April 2nd on the crime, and I'm just wondering about the employee theft. We did have a theft here?
We did.
And I was wondering, is, did we have coverage for that?
We are, what I'll say, at the eleventh hour in terms of trying to pursue coverage under last year's policy. It is a matter of getting the underwriters all the data that's required to adjust the claim, so we are looking, looking at that. And so the possibility, I'm cautiously optimistic, we're going to end up getting some level of recourse, but like I said, it's still in the data collection process.
Okay. But we did have coverage at that time, that's nice to...
The policy was in place, yes.
Excellent. Very nice to hear. I know it's always, how much is covered, you know, was it a pipe leak, you know?
There's nuances in the policy.
Yeah, I understand. So thank you, thank you for answering.
Sure.
Just to quickly piggyback on that, do we have claims-made policy? So is, is the, the policy is when the act happened, or is it when you put in the claim?
It's, it's during the period in which the policy was in effect.
Of when the action took place?
Yeah, so it will be last year's policy that responds to last, or, I'm sorry, the 2020 policy that will respond to the investment.
Gotcha, thank you. Councilman Lox?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for coming in tonight. Cyber liability, ransomware attacks, data breaches, that sort of thing. The $2 million, is that kind of industry standard?
It is.
Yep.
Standard coverage, and I'd say it's kind of what the norm of what other cities procure.
Okay. See that going up?
It is. It's an expensive policy, so like I said, the more limits, obviously, the more premium that applies. And it's a relatively new coverage. It's probably been in existence for the last six, seven years.
Sure.
So it's still kind of, you know, establishing, you know, what types of claims it's going to respond to, it's, it's, so...
On that same page, bonds, treasurer Ronald Quaglanti, 250. Can you just walk us through, like, what is that? What does that represent?
So a bond is in place in the event that there's an issue and there's a neglect of doing something properly?
Oh, okay.
Where the crime policy doesn't respond, that's what the bond policy is for.
Gotcha. Great. Is that enough to cover, Ron? Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure enough.
Chris, in my world, I rarely see the per occurrence and the aggregate equalize. Is that... You said this is a normal policy about a thousand times, but just one more time for my, my sake, is that, is that normal?
Well, I mean, we have excess coverage that's going to respond, so I'm not sure on your question.
Well, so if you look at general liability, employee benefits, it's 10 million per occurrence, 10 million aggregate. Usually, those numbers don't equalize. You have a lesser per occurrence with a higher aggregate, because you have more than one claim.
Right.
But here you have, you know, if, if one person makes a claim for the full boat, you only get the benefit of that one claim. Do we, we have excess umbrella coverage to cover?
On the workers' comp, we have excess liability that's going to respond to an aggregation issue, which is really where you're going to see it, is on the workers' comp side. To say you're going to have multiple $10 million claims on the GL side is pretty remote.
Right. Yep. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Also, Councilwoman Colletti?
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry for speaking a bit. So I have a... Hi, Chris, nice to meet you. I have a couple very basic questions. What you were talking about in terms of the training, is there any... I know there's, there's indirect expected benefit because of, there would likely be less occurrence, less likelihood of each occurrence, just personally someone being educated. Is there a direct benefit to any of those certificate completions when you submit them in terms of the premium?
I mean, the carriers expect that, so they want to make sure...
They expect it as a baseline already?
Yeah, so they want to make sure we have people that are trained properly with the equipment that we're using, that are supervising. So it's something that, you know, like I said, the expectation is there. So we want to be in compliance with that.
Got it. And then, is there a decision involved of whether or not a claim is pursued versus self-pay in terms of, in terms of the premium?
Well, workers' comp is pretty much governed, so if there is a injury in the workplace, we're kind of obligated to report that under workers' comp. And then obviously, the workers' comp laws are going to dictate what the payments are, how much the payments are. So it's, it's pretty much a schedule in terms of what the payments are.
Outside of the legally required workers' comp, all other risk assumptions, is, is there a decision to be made whether a claim is pursued?
I mean, it's in our best interest to, you know, put it within a policy, so I don't know...
In other words, if the benefit of the claim would outweigh the increase of the premium, that, that type of decision, or...
Because of our retentions, like I said, the likelihood is pretty remote that it's going to breach that. You know, in ninety-eight percent of our claims, they're going to fall within our retention. So because our process is in place to respond, we still have adjusters that adjust all of our claims. So from a self-managed point of view, we really don't have that infrastructure to manage claims internally. So we do defer to the adjusters regardless of the amount to adjust all of our claims in accordance with the laws.
Got it. That's it for me. Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome. Chris, are our retentions on the aggregate or the occurrence?
Both, per occurrence and in the aggregate. So again, it's going to be a $1 million... I mean, you have the retentions there, so whatever the retention is, depending on the type of loss, that's going to be, we're going to fund that individually. Anything above that is going to go to the excess carriers.
But in the aggregate, right? So if we have three claims, so if we have a retention of 500,000, and we have three claims of 400,000, we're not going to be paying 1.2 million, right? It's, it's the 500 in the aggregate, and then it hits the insurance?
That's right, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Seonan, thank you very much for your time.
Sure enough.
Unfortunately, it is, we've got three minutes, so we are in recess until seven o'clock. Okay, we are reconvening at 7:02. Next up is the Board of Education. They have their own budget book, but they start on the city budget book at page 105. Superintendent Cavallaro, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for accommodating us again. Again, the original date was during our vacation, and several of us were away that week.
Hope you had fun.
I had a great, I had a great time. Until I got your email saying you wanted me at the council meeting that Monday.
You could fly back real quick.
Yeah. Yeah. So you guys heard, we've done our presentation twice now. We did it once for the MARB, which I thought was very well-received, and we did it following the mayor's presentation at the public hearing. So we thought that, given that you had that information already, if you have questions, I brought with me, you know, my, my team, I'll introduce them, you know, Collette Bennett is our language arts coordinator, Judy Drenzick is the assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum, you know, Matt is in charge, Matt Cavallaro in charge of finances, Rafaela Franc in charge of science and EL, which seemed to have been a hot topic for the MARB. And again, I know there were some eyebrows raised when we, when we showed you some of the stats at, at our last meeting. Dr. Stefania Larry, who's our pupil services director. Again, I think those numbers spoke for themselves as well when we, when we did our presentations. And Tammy Mersko is our HR director, and Chris Everone, you remember from the last meeting, is our facilities director. So I think we have the right people here, and we'll try to get you as much information as you like.
I certainly appreciate all of you giving up your Tuesday evening for us. Thank you. I'll open up to the council, anybody have, wants to off the questions? Councilman Lox?
How you doing tonight, Neil?
Good, how are you?
Good. Hey, just two questions, because I've seen the presentation twice, obviously with...
Gets old.
Yeah, with MARB as well. I guess my, my big question is, in terms of losing teachers to other cities and that sort of thing, can you speak to what your, like, retention rate is? Do you know what that value is?
I can't give you a number.
Yep.
Here's what I can tell you. I've, I've never seen anything like it before in my thirty-eight years. Usually, I think traditionally, teaching was a constant profession. You got a job, you were locked in, you did your thirty-five years, and you left. I was recently at a, I think it was a Cabe superintendent's meeting about a, about a year ago, and the consensus was we're, we're all robbing each other because we're so desperate to put somebody in front of a classroom that, you know, we're, we're overpaying for people with less experience. You know, in other words, I need a science teacher because we're starting school next week, teacher has two years of experience, you know, I might offer them a higher step than I would normally because if I don't offer it to them, somebody else is going to. It's good because we get the teacher in. The bad part about it is a lot of times, I've got teachers who've already been here who aren't making the money. So I think it's a very fluid situation, not only throughout the state of Connecticut here. I can't give you any numbers, but the turnover over the last couple of years has been more than I've seen. We believe that the, again, I know you, Ryan, you were at the, when the MARB approved the contract, we're hoping that by upping the starting salary a little bit, and we gave the teachers 4% raises at the top for each of the next four, three years, that's going to help retain the teachers as well. But it's a very competitive market out there, and I can't give you exact numbers.
That's okay. In terms of the percentage of students that go on to pursue higher education or leave the school and pursue, say, I don't know, maybe some sort of technical education in terms of, I don't know, CNC machining or some sort of technical hourly position, do you have a feel for what those percentages are?
Rafaela, Judy, do you... Yeah, I thought it was about eighty percent, which is a little lower than we'd like it to be, but not, not bad, given our demographics.
So eighty percent go on and pursue another educational...
Some kind of, some kind of other degree.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight.
Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't know. Don't worry, I care. Good. Hey, budget looks good, as always. Do you have contracts coming up within, after this fiscal, would, that would make a difference with this budget?
No, we always build in some money for it, but the two contracts I have are the nurses, there are currently thirteen nurses, and the paraprofessionals, there's around a hundred paraprofessionals. And they're on the lower side of the salary stack.
So that, right now, that is set in this budget, correct?
We allow, we allow for a percentage, yeah.
So what, just say you end up with an agreement where it's a little bit higher than what you think, so you need to readjust that budget?
I don't, no, we, we won't have to adjust the budget. We'll, we'll be fine. Again, I think, you know, as you all know, you know, contracts are based on the city's ability to pay. You have to, we have to go through a MARB, and we also have to go through, you know, whether it's mediation or arbitration, and I guess it's a good thing, but we win in those circumstances because of our ability to pay. We win and we lose because in the long run, we may lose some people if, if we don't give them, you know, what, what they probably deserve.
Listen, I always said nurses and teachers are the most underpaid people, but thank you for that. I'm all set, Chairman, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Tucker?
You talked a lot about the diversity of the students in the schools, and I think one of you guys gave a really nice presentation. Do you have teachers that reflect that diversity?
Not, frankly, not like we would prefer it to be.
So can you talk a little bit about that? What's been your approach to the recruitment of teachers? How do you handle that? And what have, what have been the barriers to achieving the diversity that we would need to reflect the students that we're serving?
It's a great question. First of all, keep in mind, as we, we know, there is a statewide shortage of teachers.
Nationally, is what you're...
National shortage of teachers. So the pool of qualified minority candidates is even smaller than that. So that makes it difficult and challenging, and a minority, or someone with a Hispanic background or bilingual... with a Hispanic background or bilingual, they like money too. They're going to go where there's, where there's a higher salary. So again, I think, number one, the first thing we did was we raised the starting salary a little bit, we're a little bit more competitive. Our board, which was mandated by the state, has just passed a recruitment plan. Some of the things that we're doing is we are, we just had a, just had a meeting with Quinnipiac University, actually a forum with Quinnipiac University. We had met with them, and there's a lot of incentives to get minority candidates involved. So one of the things we're trying to do is get paraprofessionals who may have a degree or may be close to a degree to get them into a teaching program. What you may not know, I know you guys are aware that we're an alliance school district. Part of being an alliance school district is you have to put 10% of that money for minority teacher recruitment engagement. So, you know, we're, we're looking long and hard at if we can get some of our pairs, who we know, who we've groomed, who know our system really well, and get them to go back to school. It's a program, it's a two-year program. They go back to school the first year, they go to classes. The second year, we can actually hire them, and they're given a ton of support. The universities, by the way, are kind of all hot on that because they know there's money available that they're going to receive, they know that we have the money, so we're working hard on that.
So the tuition is reimbursed for those?
Not all of the tuition. However, again, Steph, Stefania and I have, have worked on that. We're looking at the number of candidates. If, if we get a lot of candidates, we'll try to even it out a little bit. However, you know, if there's one or two, they may be a benefactor and we could do it. The second thing we're willing to do is, if it's a paraprofessional, we're willing to pay them their salary, even if they have to go back, even if they say, you know, Neil, we have class today, or we've got to leave early today, we're going to work with them. The other thing that we talked about, we currently have, believe it or not, 10 paraprofessional openings. So, you know, what we talked about just, just came up, I had a meeting with the paraprofessional, the union presidents, and we talked about the need to recruit pairs. And after they left, we sat around and we said, you know, why don't we go to our graduating class, which in itself, its nature is going to be diverse, and look and see if we can get kids who are going to go to school local, with preference being to kids who are going in the education field and job share. In other words, you have classes on Tuesday and Wednesday, so you can work Monday, Wednesday, Friday. In other words, we want to attract the kids young and keep them in the school district. In a lot of districts, I don't want to say we're unique, but we're, we're really trying hard. The other thing we've done, and Tammy could talk to that, is we are, there's, there are accelerated programs, which we're trying to steer candidates to, to the, what they call the alternate route to certification. We are, again, the, Tim, I don't know, what other, you have a couple of job fairs coming up, I know.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you please keep us on the record?
Yeah.
Thank you. And could you also give your name for our record?
Tamara Merska.
Thank you.
So we felt that it was necessary to do a recruitment reception where we invited certified teachers to come in and learn what we offer in West Haven. Granted, the salary wasn't matching with other towns, but we offer his professional development, which is very important. We have teams, which we go in, and the new, the new teachers, we offer them a lot of support. So they're not alone. I, I've had people from other districts that have gone there for the money but didn't get the support. So then they came back to West Haven, because we did offer more support. We do, I'm doing, excuse me, my tooth done today. We're doing mock interviews at Quinnipiac University. Right now, they only have...
I was just going to say, given the number of candidates coming out of the program.
Yeah, they only have 17. Yeah, 17 candidates right now, but at 17, we're, we might get a couple. So that is May 6th and 7th, so we're offering that. Career fairs, where we had a career fair where we had everyone come in, whether you were a custodian, paraprofessional, someone for food service, teachers, everyone came in and we were all there, all the support was there to talk to them. And we got a lot of people to come in and fill those positions. The teachers, not so much. As I said, there's, there is a shortage of teachers, but we're trying our best to make sure that we can offer them the support, because that is the biggest thing. And now, since the contract was approved, we now can offer them a raise.
Can I, the other, one more, one more thing, which I really should mention, and it was one of the things on the last page that are currently being funded out of the ESAR grant, which we're asking for, are outreach workers. Those really have been worth the, the money that we're paying them. It's a, it's a group of six, six, six really diverse group of people, Hispanic, Black, bilingual. Do we have Pashu Speaker? And, you know, they're great working with kids. And one of, we spend a lot of time, I know Steph does, talking to these guys, saying, you know, you have a, such a, a low cap, a low ceiling, you know, you really consider going back to school and, and getting your degree, and then it's going to open up so many opportunities. In fact, our, our basketball coach, who I think the world of, Ty Sullivan, we hired him, stole him from New Haven to be our basketball coach, and he runs a really successful program, but he's great working with African-American kids. And he's since gone to work for the state, but I talk to guys, you know, if you, I know you got, you sound like you know some of the people, players in New Haven, Kermit Carroll, I tell Kermit, get this guy to go back to school. He's not a coach, he's a principal. You know, I mean, those are the kinds of people that we want in our school district. We want them long-term. Again, he's since, unfortunately, been employed by the state. One of our outreach workers, Bobby Bynum, is an assistant basketball coach. He's currently, he's currently in a program to get certified as a guidance counselor. He's one of our outreach workers. Bobby, he came to see me, a couple of issues. I said, Bobby, we're going to take good care of you. If you, as soon as you, you call me first. Don't do anything until you talk to me when you get that piece of paper. I mean, the kids love him. He's great with the kids. They run, they run our summer camp programs. They, they watch the kids during the day. They run that, what's the program they run at the high school with Monty for black males? I know it used to be developing tomorrow's professionals, but I don't know that that's, and that was sponsored by the state, but I don't know the name of the program. It's tremendous program. So, I mean, there's so many people with potential. We, we, we got to keep them here, and we got to, we got to make it easier for them. And it's always great to recruit from within, you know?
It is. I, I guess I wonder, like, we have the same issue with nursing, right? Thank you so much. We have the same issue with nursing, right? And then we need to diversify as well. And some of the approaches, I think, are to go to where people of color are. Quinnipiac is wonderful. It's my alma mater. You're not going to find a whole lot of Black people.
No, but I think, I think their point is, they know they got the money right now, or they know.
I get it. But what I'm saying is that if you want to fill these positions, you might have to go where you're going to find diverse people. And that's where I'm saying, potentially cast in a wider net, maybe to like some of the HBCUs. And that's what we've had to do. So go to some of the historically Black colleges and universities to recruit for positions like these that are going to be difficult to fill because of the lack of, you know, diversity in the schools that are around here.
It's, it's a great idea. And funny you say that. They're actually counting on us to bring them the candidates, as opposed to going to Quinnipiac and say, you know, them saying, who do you have for us, you know? It's like, it's almost like we're working backwards, if that makes sense. You know, they take our pairs, take our outreach workers and get them enrolled.
It could be both.
Correct, right. No, I know, that's great. That's right.
So that was that. The other question I guess I have is about, you know, school-based clinics. Do you, have you ever had any discussions about school-based clinics, or is there, is that on?
No, we have them. We have them, and I can let Steph talk about them, and we're, we're trying to expand them.
Currently, I'm Stefania Larry, Director of Pupil Services. Currently, we have school-based clinics at all levels. At the high school level, they have both facets where students can seek medical care through the school-based clinic and mental health services. And then at Bailey and Carrigan, we have a mental health clinic provider. And at the elementary level, we've expanded to Washington and Savin Rock School.
Are there nurse practitioners in those school-based clinics?
At the high school level, yes, I believe so.
Is there any reason for not having nurse practitioners in your other clinic?
I think, quite frankly, because of space. I think it would be challenging to stretch it to...
When they were finishing up the high schools, when we first entered into a partnership with, we're now with Cornell Hill.
Cornell Sky.
But we were with...
Well, for, oh, Optimus.
Optimus. And the problem with Optimus, you know, coincidentally, the shortage of nurses, shortage of teachers, they couldn't, they couldn't find the personnel. But when we were doing the high school, it hadn't been finished, and we were able to make them a space so that we can operate the clinic at the high school, which is, you know, it's a pretty nice area right now.
We are looking to secure a mobile clinic so that students over the summer can get their physicals and other, you know, other, other opportunities.
That's great to hear. And then the last question I guess I have is, and I see where you're going with the education and building from within or growing from within, and I just know that there are, there's a drive to kind of, you know, help kids achieve roles like nursing, like medical specialties and things of that nature. And the drive is to start in grade schools, you know, K through 12. And I just wonder if that's on your radar as well, or like, is there any approach to kind of being involved with the development? Because there's things like the Mini Nurse Academy, and there's, you know, programs that are out there like that. I just wonder whether or not that's on your radar screen, or if you've ever thought about that programming.
You know, we've done a lot with the high school kids, but in science, we're involved with a lot of programs. Again, more high school, but the kids are required by law to start their, what's it still, is it called a portfolio still, in fifth grade at Carrigan, and, you know, meet with their counselors occasionally to develop their interests or whatnot. But Raphael could tell you about some of the partnerships that we, we currently have.
Hi, I'm good.
Coming off surgery. Still kind of on the shelf.
Yeah, that's okay. So with, with, regarding to science, we do have a partnership with Yale that started way back 15 years ago with John Picard, and we still continue that. So our kids are doing, they should, their visits, Peabody's just opened up again. It's free for us to go to Peabody. We also have programs that run on West Campus, so teach, the students get to go to West Campus and be scientists for a day. They used, for the little kids, they usually do natural, natural walks, or they do exploring different types of rocks, what a scientist's all about, how they'd investigate. Neil started this when I was still teaching in the classroom, which is something that other districts have adopted also, is the science attenuant program. So our elementary kids go into science labs and get to do hands-on experiments and activities, and that's been very productive. And also this year, we started a program with the high school where our high school science, the teachers, our high school students are interested in science or becoming teachers. They go to elementary and work with the lab teacher to work with the students and learn that aspect of the job.
Talk about some of these summer internship programs.
Yeah. So also, I'm not sure if you guys know, there is the, there's fellowships at Yale for our high school students. They receive a stipend. I think in the past, on the Board of Ed, they've come to present. They usually select one to two students and do internship with a research lab, and they get to present their research at the end of the summer at the Board of Ed, also, and at Yale. Also, we do the, there's internships all summer longs for Yale students, and they're applying right now from grades five through 11. So we do a lot with Yale. And actually, funny enough, I just emailed the community outreach person from Yale last Monday, said, could you give me some data which I would share with you?
They're kind of ramping up, because for a while, with COVID, almost a lot was shut down.
Yeah. And I just, I just, and I can share the data with you once I receive it, but I just emailed her last week to ask, please share me data on how many kids are actually participating. We have quite a, quite a number of kids that participate. The other thing I did want to share with you, because you were talking about hiring within, we currently have three to four bilingual tutors that just became teachers through the ARC and ArcTel program and Relay programs. And that's, student, actually, two of them grew up in West Haven. They're from West Haven. They're bilingual. And also, most of our science teachers are people that are from the ARC program, alternate routes of certification. We're going out and recruiting college kids and bringing them back and desapping them to be able to get them certified. So I wanted to share that with you also.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you.
So I have answers to two things for you. One is, I just talked to the, oh, I'm sorry, Judy Drenzick. We had, in the last three years, lost 100 teachers over the last three years, 36 in this past year. And to go along with hiring and getting people of diverse color in our district, we have another program. It's called the TRP. It's through the state. It's a teacher residency program. And we just had one of our PIRAs go through the process, and she is going to, it's, their commitment is to be with a teacher for a year in district. And then they're committed to three years to work in our district. And we're also open to taking other teachers or other people from other districts, special ed is one of the areas that they're working on, and getting them in district too. So we do have an outreach out there. It's a process that they have to go through, an interview process, both the mentor, the mentor has to be trained in district, and of course, the person, the resident is going to be with them. And then we've also worked really hard this year on getting more people to mentor our new teachers coming in. We have quite a few people doing, going through the training of that. So we want the support there for them. Okay?
Thank you. I'd like to ask a couple of questions on page, it's 107 of our budget book. It's on the salaries specifically, and I'll...
Your budget book being the mayor's recommended?
The mayor's budget.
I'm sorry, the page?
107. The majority of the department's heads that have come said, told us that the salary are budgeted at the top step. Is that also true for the Board of Ed?
I would say, I believe it's around 75% of our employees are top step. Remember, use the teachers, that's the easiest one, because there's, and there's 500 of them. It's a 10-step contract. We've been fortunate where they've been moving the last few years. They've had a couple of freezes, but, so if you're moving up steps for 10 years, for 25 years, you're, you're at the top. So yes, the majority are always going to be at top step.
What, what was the average, because I have not read the, the contract, what's the average pay increase for the teachers and the paraprofessionals?
Powers are up for negotiation.
Okay.
Teachers at the top step are getting 4% general wage increase. We eliminated, I'm not sure if it's, do we eliminate two steps at the bottom, or just one? We eliminated a bottom step, so they're starting a little bit higher. And if, the top step teacher, I'd say around 90 grand a year.
The reason I'm asking is because line C16 and C18, which is the salaries for the classroom teachers and special ed teachers, the percentage, the bottom line percentage increase doesn't equate to that much. So my question was, is, is that because the teacher, the individual is receiving that average pay increase, but it's not changing the ultimate bottom line because we are budgeting at everybody at top step?
No, no.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused on why the numbers don't match.
Hi, Matt Cavallaro. So why, why the numbers in our local budget don't seem to match with the increases that, that the teachers are receiving is because the increase is offset by the Alliance Grant. That is where we're receiving the bulk of our increase to afford our salaries. We're, we're projected to, or we will be receiving a $3.6 million increase in our Alliance Grant.
Which is a total, just sort of give them the total.
The, the total of the Alliance Grant is just under $11 million.
So this is the only, so this is the city share?
Yes, it is.
Of it, so, so they're, so of the 3%, 4%, the city's going to be responsible for about 1% of?
Yes.
Roughly?
Yes. Because the Alliance Grant is targeted money that we have to present a, a plan and a application to the State Department of Education for them to approve.
Okay. In looking at the BOE budget book, I don't, it's not numbered, but it's the Education Cost Sharing Grant, the ECS Grant, I noticed that of the 14 years that you've listed, this is the first year that it's less than what the city share is. Is it?
Correct.
Can you educate me of what? Is, can, can you educate me of what, how, how are, how are these numbers figured in? Why has the, uh?
Why has it been reversed?
Yeah.
Because we haven't received a, a local increase of city tax dollars since.
Okay.
I believe sixteen, seventeen. And, um, the ECS formula continues to increase, and we receive increases in our Alliance Grant year after year after year. So that continues to raise the, the, the state funding, the state share, while it, it lowers the percentage of the share of, of the city basically.
Okay, so because, uh, for this year, the Alliance Grant is, you know, forty-five, eight, twenty-five, six, oh, seven. That's, uh, and that's been consistent for the last multiple years, right?
Yes, yes.
So because the Board of Ed is asking for the two million dollars, cause that's a two million dollar delta between last year and this year?
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
By the way, just to, in, in, to, to be totally forthcoming, and we tell this to the board, we do our budget, we do our budget in January. So we do current salaries. Um, so, you know, normally what happens is, you know, you get ten retirements and you're able to save some money there. Um, however, as I had, uh, was telling Councilman Locke earlier, that we're not hiring people at the first step anymore, so we're not seeing the savings that we used to save when we go out and hire new teachers. Cause remember, you're paying out, you know, usually you're paying out a retired teacher, sick time, whatever, sick time, and you're bringing in the teacher. So now it's more of a wash than, than anything.
So I'm probably really going to regret asking this question, but I'm sure that in the Board of Ed, it's just like every other department, you're having a hard time filling positions because of salary levels, correct? What's the?
I'll tell you, you know.
What, what's the delta? Um, where, where are we on the, the average of, of what you're seeing out there?
As far as filling, we, we didn't.
Of salaries?
Salaries?
Compared to other districts?
Uh, I, uh, you know, I could provide that information. We, we just use that in the, in the negotiations, and we provided it all to Marb, so I, I'm sure I can give you the information. I think that, a- a- again, and we compare ourselves to the DURG and to areas and, um, we're probably, we're low, we're still low at the bottom. We're okay in the middle, and we're a little below average at the top. I mean, we're, you know, we did better this time. You know, so I'm, I'm thankful and I'm happy we're able to, but it's, it's, in my opinion, and I know Kristen would agree with me, we're not where we should be. You know, but, but we're doing better and, and, you know, there's another negotiation in a couple of years, and hopefully then, you know, we can make the right adjustments. But again, a lot of that's going to depend on the, um, you know, the city's, uh, city's finances.
And lastly for me, for the moment, um, I understand that the ESSR monies are, uh, are over coming this budget. And that, that's pretty much the line share of your...
It's all of it. That's why we, that's why we put it in there and made it that separate page.
Right.
One point nine million is the two percent.
So I'd, I'd like to give you an opportunity to just, um, to go through that page and let us know, um, why you believe that these positions ought to remain.
Yeah, let me, um, let me grab, cause I, it, it's funny. I was almost going to start with that page, but then I'd said, then you guys have nothing else to talk about. Wouldn't be fair. Okay. So, um, we talked about the outreach workers. They do great work. Um, again, really diverse. They connect very well with our families and our kids. I would hate to lose that. Our math and reading specialists, excuse me, are, that's the support we put in place, the additional support we put in place after COVID. Give the kids extra reading help, extra math help. They also support the classroom teachers and assist them. I would say obviously, you know, of anything on the page, the teachers are our highest priority. The part-time cleaners, um, again, it's part of what we use ESSR for. When we reopen the schools, we brought them in during the course of the school day to clean the lavatories, do the high touch point areas and all of those things. Um, they now, you, we use them as substitute teachers. They still do a lot of work during the course of the day to keep the lavatories clean. If you're asking me, uh, you know, they, they do a really good job. We get a really good bang for our buck that when you consider they service all ten of our schools, they work nights, they work summers. It's, it's a pretty good value. The security guards, I, I couldn't see cutting them. Again, we originally brought the security guards at the elementary schools. We always had a team at Carrigan Bailey in the high school. But we brought them in really to monitor who was coming in and out of the build, buildings when we got back from COVID. Well, again, once people feel better because they're security guards in a building, we're not going to remove the security, uh, guards. You know, they, they, they play a vital role in there. Actually, they're really good with kids. They'll be outside with recess. They monitor the buildings. They walk around. And we just hired a, a brand new security company, um, who, again, by all accounts are getting rave reviews. Again, another, by the way, another very diverse group of people who can relate to the kids. A lot of them are former corrections officers and, um, you know, again, guys with, mostly men, some females, with really good experience in dealing with tough, some tough kids. Uh, and, you know, finally, the, uh, probably, you know, when you see certified staff covering elementary and recess. What that is, is in the contract with the teachers, the elementary teachers traditionally have, have worked really the longest day without a break. So they're entitled to what they call a duty-free lunch. They don't have to do lunch duty. So we kind of, and it was, i- i- and again, in my opinion, really outdated. We were using the old, you know, the lunch ladies to come in, work for a couple hours. You know, at one time, you get a lot of parents and participation. They're very difficult to get, and even when they come in, they're not as well skilled or trained with working with kids. So now they, what we're able to do is pay a teacher per lunch duty, an additional class period. Um, it's about ten grand a year to, to supervise really the lunch aids and organize what's going on, um, during recess. And again, I think it's a much safer environment. It's, you know, the kids have a lot more fun at recess. They're able to, you know, organize and do the good things that teachers are able to do with kids. That, you know, frankly, you know, someone, you know, everybody thinks it's easy, but to try to get twenty-five kids to play a game of kickball or whatever, it's a lot harder than it looks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Board of Ed? Councilwoman Coletti?
Thank you, Chairman. I know. Um, uh, we heard about a rant for cameras for the schools. Um, are the ongoing maintenance and replacement costs included in this budget?
Um, I don't believe there's a, there's a lot of, um, maintenance involved. However, I, I can tell you that Chris oversees our cameras now at the high school. He's pretty knowledgeable. We have a, a third-party IT team that, that he worked with that actually helped us put the grant in place. Um, the cameras we have right now are okay. We just don't have enough of them, and they're not, uh, the highest quality. When we bought them, they were really good, probably before Chris got here. So they're, they're over ten years old. So it's time, but there's not a lot of maintenance involved with them, but most of what we can do, we can do internally with our either Chris and our facilities team or our IT department.
So let me rephrase maintenance a little bit. Data, um, data storage, that's really the most costly. Um, and those have a live link, or will have a live link to the police department, is that right?
Yeah, Chris, what, what'd you explain it? Cause Chris is pretty knowledgeable with that, and he...
Also, it kind of mostly as it relates to the budget and the ongoing expense of it.
Yeah. Chris Evron, um, so
what we put together was, um, every school will have its own recording server, so it, it lives on site. Uh, we talked about with the IT department having redundancy where it's saved to, you know, a central server. We didn't think that was a good idea. It just, it bogs down the whole system. Um, and typically what we did, we put in, we got pricing for typical three, I believe it was three-year warranty on the servers. And, uh, we also got a price on seven-year warranty on the servers. Looking at the cost, um, I don't think the benefits are there for seven-year because, you know, equipment's by that time is, you know. So, uh, but we got pricing, just our IT thought it might've been a good idea just to look into it. But, uh, I worked closely with the IT department. They're knowledgeable of all the, the storage, the, the server and all that stuff. But, um, the maintenance portion of it, I mean, like Neil said, we could do all in-house with our IT department. Their basic servers that, recording servers that our IT always has, we can incorporate that in our IT budget or facilities budget. It's not extremely cost prohibitive.
Okay, so, so it's, it's baked in here?
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Chris, if you, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, and the goal obviously is to communicate with all of the emergency services and allow them access. That's, that's certainly the goal.
We're trying to get police department and everyone to, to monitor our cameras when emergencies happen, God forbid. Um, so that's, we're, we're working closely with their IT department, our IT department. There's a lot of infrastructure that they have to build for that to happen.
And that's kind of where I was going. You, you all and the police are the experts in this area. However, assuming some, God forbid, some incident did happen, ideally, the police would have a live feed to be able to coordinate their, whatever they need to do.
That's the plan, yes. Yep. And right now, we currently could do that. Um, it's just not as, as easy as we're going to do it. I physically have to be on-site with the police department, pull up my laptop and give them access to the cameras. But right now, it's doable. It's just not, if I'm not around, it's, you know, it's one of those things.
I know they're working on that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, just a couple more questions. Do you have a total number of vacancies, uh, that you have?
Yes, I do. Um...
On all levels?
Yeah, no, Tammy put that together for me today. So as of, as of today, we have, uh, special, seven special education teacher positions, seven regular ed teachers, that's, um, across the board from K to, K through twelve, a couple of concentrated areas, one school psychologist, one school guidance counselor, ten paraprofessionals and two food service operators, uh, operation workers. So that's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-six, twenty-eight, which isn't too bad at this time of year. Um, you know, again, we were very fortunate. We had a good summer last year, and our administrators work really hard. As soon as they know there's an opening, they, they get right on it, along with our curriculum people and whatnot.
Okay. Um, great.
But I'm worried. I, I, I won't tell you that, you know, you know, a- a- and, and everybody knows this. The board, my priority are classroom teachers, and we have good support in place. The problem is going to be if I can't fill those jobs, the first priority is going to be get the teacher in a classroom. And unfortunately, and again, you've heard the needs of our school district and the type of kid that we're, kids that we're dealing with, we don't want to lose that support, but, you know, we may lose some if we can't fill the classroom openings.
Right. No, that makes sense. Um, there was actually a little bit of red in here that it went down. Telephone and communications went down forty-eight percent by a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Is that right? Or can you share your secret so we can share it with other departments?
No, I mean, that, that's, that's correct. It's, uh, just based on historical spending. Um, as you could see in the operation of plan, um, of, of all those line items. Some of these, the terminology is, is, is pretty outdated, so we're trying to combine and, and, and lump some of the budgets together so we're not dealing with so many, um, different accounts.
Yeah, within each line item, there's a lot of accounts that we're matching, it's been the last couple of years actually cleaning up.
Yeah, um, the way it was set up there, every account that you see here, um, for example, the teacher's line items, there's, uh, the teacher's, um, instructional, the teacher supplies, I'm sorry, there's about two hundred and ninety-nine subcategories underneath it. So every line item is built with an immense amount of, of sub, subaccounts. Um, so we're trying to clean that up, uh, bring some newer terminology, um, to the line items, but in terms of the...
Can you define, I don't mean to interrupt you, can you, can you point to where the decrease came from?
In, in that particular line item?
Which is good.
You know, we're, working with, um, uh, Frontier, um, you know, we, we've been able to eliminate a, a lot of some, some older lines that remained on our, uh, accounts for, for, for some, for some reason. Um, we, we have, um, a lot, we, we've built up our, our, you know, wireless infrastructure and our, our wireless networks, so we're not using those funds to, to put drop, drops, like drops in to, to get, um, internet to the classroom and stuff. So we've, we've done a lot of that stuff. And we've got, actually gotten rebates from it through a program called E-Rate. Um, where, uh, because of our free and reduced lunch numbers, we're actually a completely free district for breakfast and lunch. Um, we, on certain behind-the-scenes infrastructure that would come out of this account, we, we receive about ninety percent reimbursement. So, so just doing those projects and, and getting a different pool of money and some reimbursement, we're able to, um, reduce our basically day-to-day spending and fixing, fixing some areas.
That's great. I mean, I think across the board, um, we see very little, uh, very, very few, um, line items actually with an increase. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, one more, uh, question, possibly a loaded one, probably my last. Not loaded necessarily, but, um, what are, what are your thoughts on, um, because it impacts this budget and another budget, what are your thoughts on, um, voting in the schools?
It's not going to impact this budget. And, you know, yeah, and the reason being is that a state election, the primaries are in August, and we are, um, we do have professional development in November. I, I, I think that I've been trying to walk the fine line and trying to tell the board that, convince the board, because I think the board really wants it out, you know, for a lot of, lot of various reasons. But I also understand that you got to have a place to go, and they're going to need time to work on it. You know, one of the things the board, and we've talked about is, if we do keep it in the schools, maybe we're going to require you to, to hire a police officer at every polling site, which they used to do, by the way, and it used to be paid for out of the city. This was years ago. It hasn't been done for a long time. Um, but that used to happen. It doesn't anymore. And frankly, um, I don't know that they have the manpower to, 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 to hand, you know, to, to give us or give the city, whoever secures the officers, the number of, uh, patrolmen ready to go. Some of the things that we've done, or I've done over the years, again, in an effort to try to minimize the impact, parking is always going to be a problem. I mean, I, I, to be frank with you, you know, McQuill, for example, we do have our staff, or we've asked our staff to work and, uh, uh, I'm sorry, park at the Italian American Club. We hire a crossing guard and they walk down, and our staff, it's, it's an inconvenience, but we can do it. We're not so fortunate like the Pagels, which again, for those of you familiar with Pagels, has that kind of crazy parking lot that you pull in, and then the people vote in the back. Savin Rock, I, they had moved it out, and now they're back in there. We have added a lot more parking spaces at Savin Rock, but not nearly what we, what we need. But what we've done was, like, in, in, you know, several years ago, for example, again, use McQuill, the voting took place in what they called, it's the lunchroom, used to be the old all-purpose room when I went to school there. Um, and there was no gym. But, um, we've now, we've now tried to look and say, look, how can we find a separate entrance? So that voters go in directly through the gym. They really don't need to have any contact with anybody in the school. And we do, we assign our security guards, and whatever resources, officers we have available, they'll make the rounds and they'll cover it. We've had, frankly, we've had very, we've had no issues, no major issues. You know, once in a while somebody gets lost or whatever. Forest School, same thing. They now vote in the, um, separate entrance in the cafeteria. Savin Rock, they go into the gym area. So what we've done, we, we've done that at all the schools where there are polling places. But I think if we could, and again, we want to work with you, again, we know you can't just wave a magic wand and do it. It's not going to happen overnight. You got to find places that are convenient and various places throughout the city. It's going to cost you some money maybe to go to the Italian American Club and vote, for example, or, you know, even the firehouse. They may require a police officer. So, you know, we want to work with you. We want to be patient. But I think the feeling is from the board, if, if you can get it out, we'd like to get it out, and we've got some time to get, make that happen.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Look, I know, it, it really is tough. I mean, you can't just do it, you know, and...
Sure. I, I think, um, I think in terms of budget, there's a, there's a cost associated with that.
Absolutely.
We want to take that into consideration, and we never want to compromise the safety of the children in the schools. So, um...
This year, you're fine.
Give you the opportunity to comment on it.
Yeah, no, this year, you're fine. Um, again, though, you know, the other problem, you know, that I have, though, a- and again, I been around for a long time and been on both ends of it. You know, the, the, the problem is, is that... You know, the problem is, is that, you know, people get used to their polling places. You know, they show up where they've always, they only know where to go because they've always been there. And so to tell them it's not here anymore, you got to move it, it's inconvenient. And, you know, by nature, you guys want to get people out to vote. And the other problem, the other problem we have is primaries. I mean, you know, people say, well, why don't you cancel school on a primary? Because you don't always know if there's going to be a primary. And, you know, it's the first or second week of school and you're just getting kind of into the groove and I got to call off school. And by the way, then I'm going to inconvenience a lot of people who are counting on us to drop their kids off or they drop their kids off at the community house at 7 o'clock in the morning and then they take them to school or they're in our before-school program or after-school program. You can't just do those kinds of things last minute and decide that, well, there's a primary, we're going to, can't just cancel things. So that's very difficult.
So in your mind, it's more of a planning, communication and security overall issue?
Yeah. But again, the security, I think we've done well. We work really closely with the police department and, you know, we'll keep it as safe as we can, but certainly. In fact, you know, if you go back to the camera issue and those kinds of things, and I've said this to our board on many occasions, I worry about our schools. And I think it's more important for our police to have access to the cameras and our emergency people when our buildings aren't being operated by us. Either when they're closed at night or when there's, we're open for, we have more activities, especially now with the high school, with the auditorium, the gymnasium, the pool, there's always something going on there. It's more important for the outside activities to be monitored closely for safety, in my mind, than in the schools. Because frankly, we know most of the everyday people who are coming in, the parents, we get to learn those kinds of things.
Thanks for elaborating on that. And lastly, I just wanted to thank everyone. It's a very, very difficult job that you all do in educating and protecting the kids. And had the opportunity on Friday to go to Savin Rock School for the pep rally for the test. It was the first of any kind, the first of that kind that I had ever seen. And I thought the kids were so excited and they were just as excited for a test as they would be for a sporting event. Yeah, I thought it was really, really awesome.
Just keep your fingers crossed. Let's hope the results, let's hope it translates.
Right, everyone, but everyone there, the kids feed off of the passion and the energy of the teachers.
Yeah, no, we have some really neat programs, like our iReady Math Program and stuff, where the kids actually see the progress that they're making. We do bulletin boards. It's amazing that they get to watch their own progress on some of the skills and programs and things that we do. They really get a, you know, charge out of, you know, going up a color or whatever, seeing the chart, bar graphs go up. It's cool.
No, it's great. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Councilman McMillan and then Councilwoman Haverden.
Good evening. I just wanted to speak to your comment. I think you said it was $10,000 that you give your teachers? For a lunch?
That, no, not the lunch aid.
I'm sorry.
What we pay them is, it's, a class period is generally 40 minutes. So they're giving up their lunch and they're working an additional period during the course of the day. That's contractual. There's a formula. I think it's whatever our BS plus 60 category is. It's, so even at West Haven High School, if you, we get, teacher quits before the last day of school, before the first day of school, for example. So now I've got five classes I've got to cover. Each one of those teachers gets paid to teach an extra class. That's the way it works in the elementary school with the lunch program.
Okay, so how many, there's, how many K-8 schools or elements?
It's the K to four. There's six of them.
Okay, so those six, so there would be the six, those six schools that would have that teacher?
It's more than one teacher because, you know, there's usually three or four lunch waves, so they have to be covered.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
What's up? Councilwoman Haverden?
Good evening. Hi, I have a question and I don't remember the answer. I probably should know, but I don't remember. The consultant services, the $260,000 for consultant services, which consultants, is that your legal, your legal people?
Yeah.
Berchem, Devlin and Moses?
Yes, legal is paid out of that. Our IT company is paid out of that. The individual who oversees our expulsions, basically any third-party organization that we bring in to help run this school.
I think we're on the school system.
Oh, no, sorry.
No, it's a poor term. We don't hire people to, no, to work the day-to-day operation.
No, I understood what you, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was the case. I thought it was legal, but I, it hadn't gone up in several years. You're using the same figure for three, about three years.
A lot of that in depends on the negotiations. Like, for example, the teacher negotiation takes some time, not only for the negotiation, but for the prep work that goes into it.
Okay, and I know, so it probably does go up and down. You just, your contingency fund for salaries where you're using. So just in case what negotiations pan out, that's what you either add or you take from this line item.
Correct.
Okay. And on the ESAR grant, the 20 cleaners, I mean, now that COVID is over, I mean...
A lot of those are substitutes too as well though. So like, you know, people are out sick on vacation, on comp, so they fill in too. So could we eliminate some of the cleaners? Again, I suppose we could. Frank, you know, the funny thing about that is when we first brought, wanted to bring them in, we went to the union and say, hey, we think this will be a good thing. Oh, no, you're taking our job, you're taking our jobs. Well, five or six years later, nobody's complaining because they do a lot of the...
No, I understand.
I want to say grunt work, I don't know. Clean the toilets and those kinds of things that nobody else wants to do.
All the stairwells and everything, I understand. But, you know, the other thing is whatever dollar amount we give you this year, it, we have to give you next year. So if we give you $2 million this year, we got to give you $2 million next year. So regardless...
No, 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 no. The city's share can't be less. And because we're an alliance district, it can't be less than the previous year.
Right. So if we increase our share...
Well, again, I don't want to say it, but no, you don't have to give me $2 million more next year. You just have to give me what you gave me this year.
No, I'm saying, but from what we gave last year. If we increase by $2 million this year, next year, we still have to provide that.
Same level, yes. But we'll count, again, like we've, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know.
I know. It's almost a mill rate. That's why I'm saying.
But, you know, what's going to happen is we do anticipate still being an alliance district. And again, really, that's how we've survived and thrived over the last few years.
I understand. I know the budgets are, you work very diligent at your budget. And I remember when Paul Tatoro made it, it's torturous. You made it very easy, but, you know, and I thank you for that. And it's beautiful, easy to understand. You know, they, you know, you look at that, it's almost $2 million that, you know, that this is. That this is, you're just on that.
But I think one of the, again, I know when we did that presentation for the board and we first showed it to the board, you know, I think the board is committed to funding what we had. There was, you're not going to ask for less than what you have. So we felt that we had to ask for it. However, we also wanted to make it clear, this is where we're going if we don't get it because we just don't have the money anymore to fund it. And I thought that that was, that's a pretty reasonable approach, you know, and, you know, to be upfront.
Makes it easier to see where exactly where the money is coming from. I mean, you know, you have eight elementary school security guards. That's...
Six.
Yeah, six and two, like double up or...
Well, you know what, what we did was Savin Rock, just because of where it's located and the nature and the playground all around, we have two. Just because of the playground is so big and whatnot. And in Washington, we kept the second security guard because we have the modular classrooms now temporarily. So we have one kind of at the front of the building and one stationed in the modular classrooms. The other elementaries have one.
And that's a big land. That's a lot of landmass.
It's a lot of land back there. Beautiful to build a school someday.
All right. Thank you very much, Neil. I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tucker?
Got my mic on. In follow-up to the question about voting, what kind of triggered this? Because I think all my life, all my voting life, I've been voting in the schools. When did this become an issue?
You know, I honestly don't know. That's a great question, but it just seems like it. Over the last couple of years, I think when safety and security started rearing up and you started hearing about intruders and all of the things going on at schools throughout the country, I think it brought it to light. Again, I think we do the best we can. I would never stand here before you and say the schools aren't safe and we have to do this. If you said to me, again, and even the board is pretty reasonable. And I've had many conversations with Kevin Waterfield, who understands the dilemma that you, you know, that you just can't move things. If you told me, Neil, you have to keep it there because we just don't have any place to move it or we only have one place and we'll make it as safe as we can make it. But I think that's what happened. Again, over the last few years, it's just come up.
So is school in session every time there's a...
No, during November...
Because I always remember schools being closed.
Yes, during November, they are closed. You know, that is, it's, because that's a scheduled election day. This year, yeah, the teachers report for professional development, but again, we can work around that. And we have for, again, as long as I've been around. The problem is, and again, this year, the state elections, the primaries, whether it's state rep or the statewide elections, those typically happen prior to the start of the school year, so it's not going to be an issue this year. The issue is, the issue usually is we find out there's a mayoral primary in September and we've just opened school. And now we want to keep school open and, you know, people say, let you consider closing school. And, you know, we try to reassure them the best we can. And then the other problem then is in February, there's a town committee primary or there's the, this year, the presidential primary, which was anticipated. But I mean, you know, we just can't keep closing schools either, so we have to do the best we can to make it safe. If the priority of our school district is before we can do anything, we've got to make sure, reassure kids and parents, especially parents when they send their kids to school, that the kids are safe. I think the biggest problem we have, frankly, is the parking. That becomes the dilemma. It's not, I think the kids are okay in school.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, I don't remember safety ever being an issue or associated with voting. And that's why I'm just questioning like what made this become the issue that it seems today. And I think, you know, for me, I got kind of made aware, you know, of the challenge this last election, I think, when voting was moved from one location to the other.
And the other, I couldn't figure it out honestly because, you know, by the time the presidential primaries came and we looked at the numbers, we got the numbers from the registrar, not that many people voted during it. They were, they were basically over. Both the primaries were over. So it really wasn't an issue, although I think there was some anticipation and I believe New Haven last minute decided to close. But, you know, again, I can tell you, that came up at one of my superintendent's meetings and most weren't. Most weren't closing. Most were saying, look, we can, we'll make it safe. We'll do the best we can.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I just wanted to ask a question about, I know that the budgets are separate for Board of Ed and from the city relatively. But what happens with your unused dollars, resources?
The city, that's a good question. Council passed the, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought you did. I apologize.
What do you do with those resources? Are they able to be reallocated to fund any of the things that you're requesting us to pay for now?
The answer is no. However, the council did pass a resolution many years ago that allows us to carry about $250,000. I think that number is $250,000 over. Unallocated funds go back to the city. I can tell you, and again, you guys know I've been here a long time. There was one year we ran a slight deficit and the reason was, and this was happening throughout the city at one time. However, I think since we're all in the state medical plan, it's kind of resolved itself. Medical benefits was really difficult to budget for because we were self-insured, city and Board of Ed, by the way. And a lot of times you didn't know until September of the next year whether or not, you know, you had, you know, what your, what your medical costs were. But I can tell you this and, you know, take it for what it's worth, but if I don't have to spend money, I won't spend it. You know, we have turned back over the years a lot more money than I've ever, I don't think I've ever asked for the $250, but we've turned back a lot of money and we've been pretty good about running balanced budgets and surplus. We try to get close. What we'll try to do, for example, is we'll, around this time of year, we'll sit down and we'll say, look, if we have any money left over, what, what projects can we do? Maybe it's pave a parking lot or fix a playground or those kinds of things. And we try to get close to the number, but if we don't have to spend the money, we're not going to spend it.
So can any of, any of the, the reason I'm asking the question is because we just saw what happened with the break, when we had spring break and the beach and the incident that happened down there. And we talked to the police when they were here about potentially having some kind of like youth program or something. We all know when spring break is coming and if there's nothing for the kids to do, there is the potential for them to do something we don't want them doing. So I was wondering if there's any ability for the Board of Ed, maybe to even partner with the police to put on some kind of youth programming for that week. So, you know, if there's funds available that you haven't spent, they're not, I'm sure they're all allocated. You have to allocate your funds to somewhere. But if there's unspent funds, could that potentially go towards funding?
Let me give you an example of what we did just a couple of years ago. We had, it was two or three years ago now, we had a real problem at Savin Rock School where the kids were, this was on the weekends, soon as school got out, you know, kids would get, our elementary kids would get out of school, parents would want to stay there, let them play in the playgrounds. Other kids would want to go, you know, shoot baskets or do whatever. And these older kids were just coming with the bicycles, the big tires and, you know, causing havoc in the whole neighborhood. So one of the things we did was we actually worked with the police department. And Sergeant Patralla, who's the head of the resource officers, who really does a great job, and we worked closely with him. We worked closely with him on the camera project and whatnot. You know, we actually hired, it didn't cost us a lot of money. A couple of times a week at some of our schools, Savin Rock, Washington, maybe Forest, we hired, we hired a couple of teachers. We paid them, I think, the hourly rate that we pay teachers, which is $30, $40 an hour. And we said, stay there for three hours and just, you know, make it safe. Let the kids, if they want to stay and play activities, do that. And he would send the resource officers over and they would, you know, they'd be in their kind of casual stuff and they'd get out and talk to the kids. So things like that don't cost a lot of money and they are doable. You know, the biggest issue, and you know this better than anybody, is those aren't the kids that we want to attract, the kids that would show up. We've got to, we've got to make some, we've got to make more opportunities. And I think one of the things, by the way, go online, go on our website. And there was just, NBC 30 did a piece at what we did when we got back from spring break about educating the kids, about making some good decisions. Really very effective at both Bailey Middle School and West Haven High School. All of our social studies class sat and talked with the kids and very, very successful and the kids really took it serious.
I would love to see something like, there's a pals camp in New Haven over the summer. You know, where the police have the athletic program. I would love to see something like that with our police department and Board of Ed, like come together to put something on, maybe even during the spring breaks or even in the summer. But I just was wondering, I was just curious about funds and where could potentially funds come from for such a...
It's not that much money. And I will tell you this, the other thing, you know, again, I'm not here complaining because our coach has got a nice raise in this contract, but our coaches were so low-paid. One of the things we'll let any one of our high school coaches do is we'll give them the facility to run a camp. There is a slight charge and they pay out the guy, like basketball camp, you've got to see it. There's 150 kids in the gym and it's well-run. But if our baseball coach wants to use our field, we have to charge something. Because, you know, usually, by the way, most of the time what the coaches do, they'll pay the assistants. They won't take any money and they'll, whatever money they raised, they'll put back into their program. But we're very nominal, nominal fees. And, you know, I think, again, we've never said no to anybody who can't afford something. So we do those kinds of things and, you know, we're fortunate. We have the rink. We put the ice down in August. Basketball, we have a, as you know, we have, in my opinion, the nicest athletic facility in the state and we really want to take advantage of it. And we want to use it as a recruiting tool to, you know, get kids interested in West Haven High School. The kids that we want to attract to the high school.
Thank you so much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about the facility. I don't know if, Chris, if you want to jump up. Are we max, are we leveraging the rink to the extent that we can? I'm sure you get this question a million times, so I'm going to ask it a million and one.
I'm going to answer that. Chris doesn't need to answer it. Oh, this is, I think it's one of my big accomplishments. This is, I think it's one of my, my big accomplishments. When we took over the rink, and Anne may remember this from her first time on the Board of Ed, we were losing about $200, $250,000 a year. We now, we now run it at a slight profit. One of the issues that we have is that we can't keep the ice down all year. The compressors just don't allow, it wasn't built for that. But, you know, and it wasn't rocket scientists, we looked at what our costs were. We run it now with part-time people that share, go back and forth between the field and the rink, as opposed to just having a dedicated staff at the rink and a dedicated staff at the field. Chris oversees the operation, but now I have, like, Joe Morell will do the scheduling over at the, at the rink, and there's nobody better than Joe with that kind of stuff. So I would say we're doing okay at the rink, but it's, it's hard to make money there. You know, the way the rink, rinks make money, and I learned a lot about rinks, I think I could run one if I had to. They make their money, they make their money off concession stand, the sports shop that goes with it. Fact that, what I learned also was that if you have two sheets of ice, like Shelton, for example, it's run off the same compressor, so it doesn't cost twice as much to run it. The problem with our rink is that, and we, we looked into renting it out to somebody to operate it for us. The problem is, we use it for phys ed class. We have a boys' and girls' hockey team. So I just don't have enough hours to, nor do I have the staff to operate the other facilities that you need to run the birthday parties and those kinds of things, to actually, you know, turn a huge profit over. You know, when you tell somebody, go ahead, you can, you can operate my rink, but you can't use it from seven to two because I have phys ed classes in there, and then from two o'clock to four o'clock, I've got my girls' and boys' hockey team that we can't let you charge for. It would be hard for someone to come in and make money, they're just, there aren't that many hours. However, we're competitive with our ice rates. You know, our food service department, they actually pay us, because we used to have a heck of a time collecting the money. They run both the concession stand at the football field and the concession stand at the rink. They pay us $1,000 a month, whether they're operating one or the other, and that's whether it's used or not, and it's, now it's guaranteed money, so it's some nice income. Thing that I would tell you about rinks, though, is, if you guys are familiar with them, you know, East Haven was shut down a couple of years. All of the rinks, Hamden, by the way, our rink, you know, outshines, if you were to ask anybody, far as the actual plant, it's, it's beautiful, but it needs some work. You know, there's, there's talk up the floor, I mean, we could talk about this all day, and capital budgets and things like that. You know, we have enough, we make enough money to do some work over the summer, to, to fix a compressor, to do those kinds of things. But if you really wanted to upgrade it and make it a efficient place, and know that it's going to be there for the next 25, 30 years, we would, you know, you've got to put some work into it. You know, I mean, long-term work, not just the day-to-day maintenance. But we do okay there. And as far as the athletic fields, again, the, the issue with the athletic fields is, is that, and by the way, this is the greatest time of year, if you go down there around three o'clock, and you see the softball team, and the football, and the, the baseball team, and the track, and the lacrosse team, it's just constantly being used, and it's being used by our kids. And, you know, to me, that's what it's for. It's, we want the kids who are playing sports for us to, to feel like, you know, hey, we're West Haven High, we, we, we have the best fields, we have the best, in fact, Chris, I don't know, did they book the state finals at the? We have all the semifinals for softball, for example. And I think it's great when other people come in and they say, boy, you guys really got something here, you know? It's, it's our pride and joy.
Thank you.
But I don't know that we can make a million dollars there, you know?
No, thank you for that, that was helpful. And my, just, my last question is on page 122 of the mayor's proposed budget, the capital request. I know that these are, you know, high-level plans, nothing set in stone, but I'm just curious for FY '25, the items that are listed here, you know, how serious is the Board of Ed of pursuing these items? Or, or do you think there's going to be some adjustments to this?
Most of those, believe it or not, are general maintenance kind of things, like paving, for example. You, we can, if we started paving today and we finished, then we're going to start paving what we started with, again, it's just constant maintenance, constant upkeep with like HVAC and things like that. You know, Carrigan, you know, again, I, I, I know we had the discussion with the boiler. My real concern with Carrigan is, and I've said this before, is it's just, we really should look at the total amount of money we're going to be putting into that building over the next several years, and decide, does that make sense? Having said that, at some point, we got to, you got to do a boiler now, even if you were to do something later on, because we got to have heat, because it takes four to five years to go through the process of applying for, for funds for a school and building the school. So something's got to be done, but, you know, that's a concern of mine. You know, how much money are you going to put into that particular building? Other than that, you know, most of the stuff in there is, you know, hardscape, HVAC improvements, roof replacements, we try, we've tried to do some, by the way, roof replacements, you know, I know people ask about solar, well, you can't really do the solar until you do the roof. So, you know, it's, we've done some projects, but we've had to do the roofs first. So I don't think there's anything, the two big ones, the two big-ticket items are Washington Elementary School and paying for the high school, obviously.
And speaking of Washington, when's the anticipated completion date?
Supposed to be the fall of '25.
The fall?
Yeah.
Next year. Do you foresee any sizable adjustments in your budget because you're going to be in a new school? Do you think it's going to have any impact on?
Well, all the furniture and equipment and computer, everything is included. You know, so that's a good thing. And that's why I said, it was, and I know I mentioned this, the high school, for example, everything was new, but now it's getting to be four or five years old, and we got to start replacing the technology and things like that. But no, not to start the building, in fact, it's going to be energy-efficient. The way it's explained to me is that even with air conditioning, because of the high efficiency, it's cost us less to run those buildings than it would to run the old Washington school.
Did you have a question? Councilwoman Heffernan, then, Councilwoman Tucker, thank you.
The HVAC, you're only, you're not looking to bond anything in the coming years, only 2029? You don't, I know that you were, you really had focused on the HVAC, especially during COVID. Is there, had you gotten everything all settled? You don't think you're going to need to do anything till 2029?
We should always be doing some maintenance, and we, you know, you know, that's, the biggest issue that this municipality has, the Board of Ed has, it's the preventative maintenance. We spend the premium all the time because we put, we put off, and then things become an emergency. Having said that, we were in really good shape right now, and Chris can talk too. I know, like, the high school, we're constantly changing the filters, and, you know, we've, we've done a lot of the cleaning, and we brought, we bring a company in now that actually cleaned all the vents and where the heaters are and ducts and things like that.
Year and a half ago, two years ago, we, we cleaned all the ducts, all the ductwork in every building. We, with the COVID funds we had, we did that, wasn't done probably like 10 years prior. And, you know, we also brought company in to clean all the baseboard radiators and everything, all the vents. So, you know, we're trying to stay, keep up with it, we're not going to let it go 10 years, but it is costly to do the ductwork, and filter changes, we're on a regular basis, changing filters. I mean, that's key to longevity of the equipment, too, not just health and safety of, of everyone, it's longevity.
You don't foresee any projects that you could put in the five-year capital plan?
Yeah, there's, there's always stuff in there, right. There's always something that we can put in, you know?
Okay, thank you.
So I presume, Chris, that you have a, a preventative maintenance plan, and you're doing the best you can with the resources you have, and triaging and prioritizing?
Correct, correct, yeah. We, like I said, we, you know, now we're starting to get in, in cooling weather, so now we're, we'll start going, hey, this, our air conditioner's not working here, so we'll send the guys out. Usually they go through the equipment when they change filters, which is now shoulder season. So, and we'll, we'll see that.
What's shoulder season?
In between, uh.
Oh, okay.
Heating and cooling.
Got it.
Yeah.
Or as I call it, allergy season.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing with all that pollen.
Councilwoman Tucker? Your mic. You had it right.
Carrigan, so you, you talked a lot, and I've heard you say this a few times now, about the need for a new building, right?
It's easy for me to say.
I know, yeah, but I wonder if you're talking about replacing the existing site, a building at that site, or if you're talking about buying a new place?
If you're asking, if you're asking Neil what his plan would be, I think that's the easiest place to do it. There's a ton of land there, and you can do it in the back. I think a lot of work would need to be done in the front to kind of level it out and whatnot. And again, I don't, I don't know, I know that I've seen the ponds or the river that you probably many of you have heard about that runs underneath it, and I don't know how that works. But there's plenty of land there, you know, it does go out to Boarall Road in the, in the back, which it opens up right near Forest Elementary School. Even now, what I would like to do, and it's something I've talked about for a long time, if we can find some kind of extra entrance from the post road, I think that would be great, so that way we can have buses go up in one way and out another way, and make it a little bit safer. But, you know, I, I do think that, you know, we, we, again, it's a lot of it is the city's ability to pay. But, you know, in my mind, I say, you know, when, when you're getting 75%, you're getting, and again, I'm throwing a number out there, and I haven't looked into it enough. But if you're going to build a $100 million school, and $75 million is going to be in the form of a state grant, there's nothing to talk about. You know, because even if you put this amount of money into Carrigan, you're still, over the next 20 years, going to spend a lot more money. You know, and, and again, I don't want to blame anybody, because I, I think people do the best they can under fine, under the, the conditions we're living under. But I think, again, and I saw a lot of you nodding your heads when I was talking about preventative maintenance and thinking ahead a little bit, it's just something, until you get your financial house in order, it's, it's hard to do. If, you know, it's hard to plan ahead when you need to figure out, you know, what am I going to have for supper tonight? You know, and that's kind of where we've been. But I think that, you know, you look seriously, I mean, you, you look, you really got to, you hire an architect, you do an engineer, and you say, look, what is it, what's it going to cost me to, to, to keep this building up, you know, for the next, again, 25 years? Because that's what you're going to pay on a bond, or 20 years, whatever it is, 20, 30 years, whatever the bond is going to be.
Okay, and I think the last question I have is just out of curiosity, the rink, you just mentioned, the rent for the rink, the building itself, you pay?
No, no, we own the rink. When I talk about rent, I'm talking about people who rent the ice from us.
Oh, okay.
We, we receive, like Notre Dame High School, for example, they rent our ice. It's about four and a quarter an hour, Chris, something. And youth hockey, we, West Haven youth hockey, we give a break to and things like that.
So the park department rents?
We, we, no, 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 we run the, we run the skating programs. The Board of Ed runs the skating programs, and we make the money there.
Okay, that's curious to me, because I'm looking at the Park and Rec service, and they have on their budget Bennett Rank programs, I just was wondering what that is.
Chris? Sorry.
And our staff, too. I know when I came along and took over the rink, they were running programs, Learn to Skate. I think that's about it, Learn to Skate program.
To our knowledge, they're not, they're not using.
They don't, they don't rent the ice from us, there's nothing, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we run our own.
Rented anything.
Okay, is that the same for the aquatic programs, where you have pools?
Actually, we, they, they, they used to run the, what was it, the West Haven Wizards, the swim team, but once COVID ended, they had a hard time reviving the program. So we went to the coaches, Sean McCauley and Aaron McCauley, who actually teach for us, and Sean, they're, you want to talk about West Haven, they are West Haven Swimming. And we said to them, you know, we don't want to see this program die because it hurts our high school swimming program. So what they did was they made it a private swim club, they charged the people a little bit, Park Rec always charged it, they charged a little bit more money. They rent the pool from us, we don't make a ton of money. But they, we, we were able to, in my mind, save the swimming program in West Haven.
Park Rec does.
Yeah, they do rent.
They, they, they use the pool, we don't charge them a rental.
Public swim, senior swim.
Senior swim, Learn to Swim, but they do pay for custodian fees associated with that.
But the biggest, the biggest renter is the, are the Wizards.
Thank you. That's it, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions for the Board of Ed? Councilwoman Coletti?
Thank you, Chairman. Just two quick follow-up questions.
Sure.
What do the part-time cleaners cover that the custodial line item does not cover?
I, I think it's mostly substitutes. Subs, yeah, they, they substitute when guys are sick, when they're out, and then there are additional helpers during the day that, again, they go throughout the bathrooms and things like that.
Do you have a substitute line item in here somewhere?
Do we have a substitute line item?
Yeah.
We, by the way, we don't hire substitute custodians anymore. It's all done through, through a third party.
C6.
What's the name of the company? SMG.
Are we talking about substitute custodians or?
Both, it's the same company that we use. But so are the, so are the part-time ones. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying substitute teachers, I thought you meant custodians. I apologize.
I was describing the, the line item in Essor, that it was substitute, that it was part-time cleaners that were acting as substitutes as needed.
It's the same company, yeah, you're talking about, she's not talking about teachers. I was, I was right, I'm sorry.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure about that.
No, my, I, I think I was right, I think I, I, I think they thought you were talking about teachers, I'm sorry.
So I make sure. And, right, and, and then my second question was, the electric, the utility, basically, the utility costs have zero increases. Utilities are, utilities increase, is there some sort of, some, something that's just not baked in here, an increase year over year?
Well, we do lock in the third-party generation rate with the city. Whatever they lock in, we lock in with. And also, we've, with the, a lot of our COVID money, we've, we've put in some high-energy efficient, we updated our, our controls and whatnot, and we have solar at a lot of, at a lot of our schools that are, that's limiting the need for a significant increase.
Okay, so your total operations, gas, oil, security, water, electricity, all of the utilities have zero?
We have a credit for the solar that's going into Malloy, which you can't get.
Okay, okay, so you're comfortable not increasing any utility expenses?
It's $250 a year guaranteed.
Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
And I apologize, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Chairman Pascal?
Thank you, thank you, Neil, thank you staff for being here. I just have one quick question. Very fortunate to have a council here that asks a lot of good questions, so I don't have to talk very much. The money that follows the student when they go out of district, can you speak to that a little bit? Just, I know we have new people here, and I think it's very important with your, you know, your budget and education. When a student goes out of our district to another school, the money that we get for them follows them, is that correct? Am I saying it right?
I don't, I don't think money follows, that's kind of a different argument and debate. However, there are students that have some nexus to West Haven, for example, that may go to school in another district because they're in a foster care. We would be responsible for the education of that child. We also are responsible, if through the planning and placement team process, for any outside tuition or educational services that the kid, that kids are entitled to. That also would include things like transportation. If, if there's a child that's, again, been That also would include things like transportation, if, if there's a child that's, again, been temporarily relocated, um, with a relative, maybe close by in Hamden or whatever, but we, they come pretty far, we've gone to Middletown, we've gone to New London, we've gone to that, we're responsible for the transportation.
Yes, that's, that's exactly what I, when they're...
Yeah, and, you know, we have no say in that, I, I think, I think where you're going is, we have no say in it, and, you know, we, I think at one time, years and years ago, uh, the state through DCF used to pay some of those fees, and they passed it all along to the municipalities.
Right, so you're, we're actually paying when kids are going to other districts, we have to give them the money for that.
Sure, and you'll see, you know, it, it's volatile in all towns, in other words, when, when Boards of Eds come crying to the city for more money, most of the time, they're going to talk about, uh, well, now they're talking about Essor grants going away, and special ed tuition costs rising, and, again, those are things that are out of our control that we, you know, we budget, we look at trends, we know, Steph can tell you how many kids are placed out now, and what we've been doing, and, you know, many of these, many of the places we spend kids, we send kids, they just tell us, you know, "We're going up 10% next year" or whatever, and we absorb it, you know?
Right.
We do get money back, we do get some money back from the state, there's another ECS grant called excess, uh, excess cost share, and there's a formula where we recoup some special ed after whatever the average tuition is.
4.5%.
4.5, yes, but, so we get some money back, but, you know, it's, it's, it's an expense.
Right, okay. Um, do you feel as though, I mean, I know I've, I've seen the paper that a lot, a lot of other towns are laying off because they're just, you know, they're, they're not preparing for that lack of the Essor grants and things, and they're, they're laying people off, do you anticipate us getting any of the people that they're laying off that?
We're going to try like heck.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you, Neil, I want to, um, just ask you one more softball question. How long have, has the Board of Ed been flat-funded?
Since 2016. That's city flat-funded, again, I don't want to...
City flat-funded, yes.
Yes.
And in, so that's about seven years?
Yeah.
And in that time, salaries have gone up, operation costs have gone up, and you've made it work?
We've made it work, but again, we've, you know, we've got the Alliance Grant, financially, we were able to save some money during COVID, we were able to get a lot of things done, a lot of activities didn't take place, um...
So there's been sacrifice because of it?
Yeah, there's been sacrifices, but we, we can make it work, you know, you know, you can make anything work.
I'm, I'm not hinting that that's what, what I'm looking for.
No, no, no.
My, my point actually is, is that costs have gone up, and you have worked hard over the seven years to do that.
And here's what I, again, I think that I, I probably didn't emphasize this enough, and Matt mentioned it earlier, with those increases, those are targeted increases that you have to put towards your, you know, towards educational programs. You know, they, they can't cover the costs of your operations, your basic operations, your utilities, and those kinds of things.
So the, really, the point I was making is that in seven years, this is the first time the Board of Ed has really made a substantial ask of the, of the city side.
Yeah, and again, it, we felt, you know, we were losing the money, and, you know, things are running pretty well, so, again, I was, you know, Wayne Gretzky, you get a 100%, you don't get 100% of what you, you get 100% of what you don't ask for.
I say that to my soccer kids all the time.
Absolutely.
Any wrap-up questions? Did you have any? All right?
You miss 100% of the shots you don't take.
You don't take, that's great.
I apologize.
Everybody, thank you for being here with us, really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Um, before we do anything else, I'm going to call a short recess.